I thought you... never mind. Select Boards Meeting, June 26, 2018. In attendance, Selectman Deedy, Selectman Fox, Selectman Moglen, Chief Administrative Officer, Carl Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
Good afternoon, folks, or good evening. Up in front of us tonight is the position of Deputy Chief, I believe, on interviews for Fire Department, career Deputy Chief. So, Mr. Ronald E. Dougherty Jr. is first. Come on up, young man.
Take a stack.
Take a whole stack or half the other? I guess you can have a seat way down there.
Good lord, the guy's in another area.
I know, I'm like, this doesn't work.
Take a stack.
Can we order a half, uh, can we order half tables for next time?
Fine, do you need a water or anything?
I'm good, thank you very much. So, take a stack and pass it down.
That's a long distance.
It is, it is. This is a... We're just trying to get situated.
I got four.
Ron, Ronald. Ron. I got one, two, I got three.
Too bad.
Right?
All right, we should each have three?
Should each have three.
All right, I got two extra.
Two extra, pass them back, two extra.
How many is this probably? Three?
I got four.
You got four? Why don't I, I got three. Just be the deputy secretary.
Efficient.
Yeah, real efficient. All right. So, we're new at this, as you can tell. We just all got elected last week. We're gonna ask you a few questions. I don't know if we're making a decision tonight. We're going to leave here, go back to our other room later on, continue with our meeting. We may or may not make a decision at this point. Oh, what is this? Introduce candidate? Oh, wow, I got cheat sheet. Wish they'd told me first. Explain process with commission. We will ask a set of prepared questions. We're gonna ask a set of prepared questions to you. Then, at the end of the candidate can ask, you're gonna get to ask us a few questions at the end, preferably three, keep it under thirty minutes. And that's pretty much, ask questions, okay. Wish they'd said after. That's pretty much it. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Don't be nervous.
That's a little late for that one.
Because what you have to understand, you have to understand is, we have no idea what you're saying to us anyways. So, it works out both ways. So, we're gonna start with you, sir.
Really?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, sir, yourself?
Very well, thank you. What do you feel is the most important quality of someone in a command staff position?
Uh, most important quality, I'd say, would be leadership. You literally are leading a crew of firefighters into a dangerous situation. You have their lives at your disposal, and they are trusting you to make the right decisions, not only to save their lives, but the lives of others, and to preserve any type of property that we may be able to do at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is the biggest challenge you will face in your new position?
Uh, learning the personalities of everybody in the Fire Department. Fire Department is, is a very eclectic group of people, no matter where you go. So, it would be learning all the different personalities and meshing them into one, so they could be a cohesive working group.
Thank you.
Don't mind me, I just write slow. Like, Ron?
Ronnie.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you apply for this position when it was posted as the captain's position? And what made you decide to apply for the deputy chief?
I did not apply for the captain's position. I applied for the deputy chief's position. I was unaware of the captain's position coming from the Maryland-Virginia area.
Okay.
It wasn't until that I found out that I was relocating to the area and started doing my job, sure, that I found the deputy chief's position was posted for.
Okay.
Follow-up, please?
Sure.
If I remember, and if I didn't remember, correct me. You've just recently moved to the area or you're moving to the area?
Yes, sir, we just closed on home in Enfield, Connecticut, just last week.
Home, that's the Maryland thing.
Sorry.
I know, I know home, if I hear it.
Single-family residence.
What's your... Did I read somewhere that... Was it your, is your wife doing a, uh, something at Bay State?
Yes, she's the newest emergency medicine doctor at Bay State.
Great. It's not a residency, right? This is her?
It is a residency for four years.
And then, so, kinda begs the question, what happens after residence?
The plan at this point would be to stay in the area.
Very well.
She is, she's originally from Granby, so we've gotten to come in full circle.
Ah.
To her life, so this area was number one on her pick list to come back to.
Granby, Mass. or Granby, Connecticut?
Granby, Connecticut.
Okay.
Is that good or bad?
Granby, Mass. Well, they've got better bagels than Granby, Connecticut.
Yes, they do.
Well, they don't have good bagels in Granby, Mass., I'm sorry.
Yeah, just catching up my notes. How will your unique qualifications help the Southwick Fire Department make a smooth transition from BLS to ALS?
So, in my current deputy chief's position with Kensington Fire Department, I was in charge of instituting the ALS program and getting it off the ground and it, and where it is today. I started with two paramedics, which were volunteer at the time, and I'd say a pot of money that the Board of Directors allotted for us to spend. So, I know all the ins and outs of getting the license through the State Office of Emergency Medical Services. I know the purchase, I know about how much it'll cost, and I know how to attract other medics in the area. And one of the biggest attractions is going to be call load and financial attraction. I can do both of those.
Quick follow-up, I didn't understand the last part.
So, anywhere that you have an ALS service, and this, this is gonna sound particularly harsh, paramedics wanna do what they're trained to do, and that's save lives. So, you have to entice them with the, with a call load of, we provide you, there's a certain type of, of ALS timeframe. If you are in an area that you employ paramedics that primarily run what's called basic life support calls, and the medics don't actually get to perform their skills and actually stay up on their skills, you're gonna have a really hard time with retention.
Okay.
So, one of the things that we did, and the area that I currently served, was a largely elderly population, so we ran a lot of good medical calls. We neighbored with some of our departments that ran a lot of good trauma calls, and we switched paramedic shift for shift. So, now, we could actually expose them to some of the good medical calls while we're exposing ours to the trauma side of things.
There you go.
Have you personally ever been involved directly with a BLS to ALS transition?
Yes, I have.
You just answered that?
I thought we talked through that, we weren't gonna do that.
Well, we didn't actually see the question, so here we are. Thank you.
Ronnie, which area do you feel you are stronger in? Fire or EMS, and why?
So, in today's world, it would have to be EMS. You tailor your service to what the call load dictates. In the majority of the fire service across the country, the split is about eighty percent EMS, twenty percent fire. So, while we still have to be good at fighting fire and saving lives in dangerous situations, we need to make sure that our EMS is what our bread and butter of the job.
Thank you.
What was your biggest professional failure, and what did you learn from it?
Biggest professional failure would be not starting in the fire service right out of college. So, I had come from a family full of firefighters throughout the country, and I had the knowledge that I wanted to be a police officer out of college, and my father just shook his head and he said, "You can go ahead and do what you wanna do." So, I went, uh, I became Deputy Sheriff with Montgomery County, just outside of DC. Did that for about two years and realized that I made a grave mistake. So, I, I lost two years of, of, of good training, and it just made it harder to get my foot into any door at that point.
What is the best training experience you have had?
I can answer that, well, I'd like to answer that with two different lines. First being the EMS line. EMS training is something that's hard to do when you're working with mannequins and SIM labs. The best EMS training I had was having the chance to go to a cadaver lab and actually perform some of the skills I don't get to perform every day on real, live human beings. Some of our more invasive skills as paramedics in this country, you don't do every day, you may do once in your career. So, a cadaver lab was, was fantastic. I will probably never do an emergency surgical crike ever again in my career, but I can say that I've actually done one. On the fire side of things, it would be live fire training. Nothing can take the place of real, live training, and that goes for fire and EMS. Whether it be acquired structure training or burn, burning in a burn tower, a fire building, somewhere around here, any type of live training is, is paramount to a successful group.
Okay, thank you.
Ronnie, if you had the opportunity, how would you reconstruct the department? Full-time, part-time, volunteer, et cetera?
Not knowing the current makeup and the percentages of the department now, I would have to look at call load, response times, and try to mirror them to where the national response times are dictating that we should be. Obviously, full-time staffing is key, getting units on the street and on the scene of a call, especially in those critical minutes of a heart attack or a house fire. And you hear all these statistics every day about, you know, every minute, your heart will lose ten percent of its muscle during a heart attack, or every minute that the Fire Department's on the scene, the fire grows a hundred percent. So, that would be the best, and that would be the quickest way to get fire trucks out on the street. Financially, it's not always feasible, and that's where having an integrated department, both career and volunteer firefighters, works very well. Coming from Montgomery County, Maryland, one of the largest combination departments in the country, we've done a really good job of integrating the two and having trainings for the two different groups, and we have to accommodate to the volunteer timeframe, because they still have Monday through Friday, nine-to-five jobs. So, we always can't do training Tuesday at eleven AM. Sometimes, we have to do it, you know, after five o'clock when volunteers arrive.
What do you think are the three biggest challenges facing the Southwick Fire Department today?
Uh, growth would be one, response times would be two, and the transition to advanced life support services is gonna be a large feat.
Follow-up? So, growth means growth of?
Growth of the town. If you look at the United States Census Bureau reports for the town of Southwick, it has progressively gone up in the past fifteen years. And if we continue on the same, same trend, the, the town is gonna double in size in the next fifteen years. Fortunately, the more people that you have, the higher call volume that's gonna associate with that as well.
How would you promote a fire public safety awareness issue?
Fire prevention is something in the fire service that firefighters reluctantly do, because some say it's shooting yourself in the foot. But it's a job that we need to do. I think one of the easiest ways that we can do it is enforcing smoke detectors and how reliable they actually are. There are a slew of federal grants out there where you can get smoke detectors for free, and we can hand them out to local residents, and they come with the batteries. We can even offer our fire trucks to show up at your house, knock on your door. If you are unable to install your smoke alarm, we will. Getting out there, meeting the community, having the sense of community while you're doing this, it's just, all it's gonna do is strengthen the bond between the nine-one-one caller and the fire rescue crews.
Thank you. What's an important value to you, and give an example of how this value affects your life?
Trust means everything. Not only within close personal friends, I keep my circle relatively small because of trust. However, we have citizens that have never met us that are picking up the phone, calling nine-one-one on their worst day. They're trusting us to come into their house, they're trusting us to provide the best care that we possibly can, and not do anything that's going to affect them in the long term. We have so many opportunities to be not trustworthy in the country, it's amazing. And the fact that the majority of the firefighters are the most trusting profession you're gonna meet is one of the true qualities of Fire Department, that is, bar none the top.
Just a quick follow-up. I should've done it earlier. Where you're coming from, the population makeup, age, demograph?
So, Montgomery County as a whole, um, so I serve in two different areas. I serve in Montgomery County, Maryland, as a deputy fire chief. I'm also a paramedic firefighter for the federal government in Virginia.
Okay.
And I do that because of call load.
Okay.
So, in, in Montgomery County, in my position as deputy chief, I don't get to run the ALS calls, I would like to anymore. But Montgomery County as a whole has 1.2 million people in a county that's almost 700 square, square miles large. And the immediate battalion that I serve, we have about 350,000 of that million. And my immediate first do is, we have everything. I have industrial, I have single-family homes, I have hazardous materials there. So, it's, it's hard for me to give you a true breakdown of age groups, because we are the, your typical family area, where working middle class, we're coming to settle on one side of the town, and then on the other side, we still have a, a large industrial area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's the end of the questions. Have you read the employee handbook?
I have not, only because there was an issue with mailing. I was in the middle of a move, so the original mailing went to my Virginia address, and it was not forwarded to my Connecticut address. So, thankfully, with the help of Cindy, I was able to get the cover letter to come here. So, I have not read the employee handbook or the union contract.
That'd be it. You can give it to him now.
I wanna wait a minute. So, yeah, okay, so you didn't read the Fire Department Union?
No. However, I currently serve, serve as the union vice president for Local 3217.
Okay.
For my department in Virginia. So, I'm pretty well-versed in, in the international.
Yep.
Rules, and also the local rules for us.
Wonderful. So, this was handed to me this morning. This was mailed to you. It came back to the town of Southwick, and the postal carrier put it in the box for the motocross track, because they saw Dowdy, probably meaning John Dowdy, who was a...
Oh, Dowd.
Dowd, National Motorcycle Champion. So, they peeled off the sticker and found out it was the town of Southwick, so here is your mail. Believe it or not, I didn't even realize it was you until you said that, and I'm like, I gotta turn this into Carl.
So, that's a federal agency.
So, yes, so I will bill you for that, Carl, but we were able to deliver your mail to you.
I will...
Hell or high water, you got it.
I will read that tonight, I promise.
That was, wow, I'm looking, I didn't know that name, it's in this packet. All right, so do you have any questions for us?
So, I do, and one of the biggest questions would be, how does the Fire Department work? I know that we have full-time current staff with qualified firefighters and a volunteer contingent. Reading online, just from some of the forums that I have found, I know that the full-time staff works what's called a two-two-and-four, pretty much two-twelves days, two-twelve nights.
Sure.
So, is there any other, I, I'm used to working twenty-fours.
Right.
Is there any other thing that I would need to know to integrate into a department, especially coming from, you know, Virginia to Massachusetts?
There's probably a million things you should really know, but we're not gonna tell you any of them.
Probably state, state EMS rules.
Okay.
Office of Emergency Management Services is all EMS in certain state laws. We're not, it's not a civil service community.
Right.
So, there would not be that layer, so it's basically contract law or mass law on the operations, as well as the regulations. But all, all that stuff would be addressed through the professional development of the person who goes into that seat, and their goals and objectives that are developed with the chief.
Okay. And only one more question. Is there anything in the town that would not allow us to pursue federal grants for some of the smoke detectors, or some of the safer grants for staffing or fire apparatus or anything of that?
I believe we're already doing some of that, so I don't think there's anything that would stop us.
We just got SCBA's, we just got a federal grant for those.
We'll take a grant and come find you.
Yes, yeah, we're constantly hungry looking for money.
I've done pretty good, uh, I've done pretty well with grants. My deputy chief's position, in four years, we obtained $7.2 million in grants for various items.
So, it's the bar, then?
Yeah, that's the bar.
One of which was, the first was a grant to get a grant writer.
Oh, good. You didn't get a ladder truck or anything, did you?
We did get a ladder truck. We've also gotten a company.
Just throwing it out there.
The only, the only downside, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, the only downside with getting a ladder truck under a federal grant, if you read the fine print, it has to be a dual-purpose apparatus. So, we, in, in our area, quints, as we call them, they're not really needed, because I'm surrounded by fire trucks everywhere.
Right.
But we, we were forced to purchase a quint that we, was just for, our area just wasn't useful.
Right.
We only kept it for four years, and we had to turn it back in. I will tell you, anything for, when it comes to fire apparatus, anything after three years, you can sell, and as long as the proceeds go for a like purchase of apparatus, you can keep everything.
Right.
So, if you purchase a ladder truck off a grant, you don't like it.
After three, you can go.
After three years, you can get a better one.
We didn't get the grant, and we're getting a ladder truck, so that's a moot point. Did you, so you're not from here, your wife was from here.
Correct.
You guys met down there?
Yes, so she actually went to undergrad at Johns Hopkins. During the interview, I told you that I started my program with two paramedics.
Right.
She was one of them.
Oh.
However, that was nowhere in, outside of my rules or regulations as supervisor, but she was one of two. So, to, to this day, we went from having one single BLS unit, and I currently operate a BLS unit and ALS transport piece, and ALS paramedic chase car.
Right.
With twenty-seven different para, paramedics, and they average about 6,700 calls a year.
Six, seven hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for having me up here.
And you've just moved to the area already?
We did. So, we, we closed on a home, a single-family residence, a couple weeks ago. Currently, with my departments, I work twenty-four hour shifts, so commuting back and forth is relatively easy. I also have a connection through American Airlines where I can fly relatively cheaply, so.
So, you're still employed down there?
Correct.
Understood, okay.
So, I travel back and forth currently.
Gotcha.
Awesome.
All right. Any other questions, guys?
No, very impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah, not sure if we're making a decision tonight. We're, like I said, we're gonna interview everybody, go in the other room, continue our meeting, and go back to it at some point this evening.
Sounds good.
We appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come around.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know how this is gonna work.
Yeah. Never had a table this big before. Very welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Ronnie.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
This is from him to us.
What's this?
So, this, I'm being handed this to send down.
Okay.
This, I believe, is an informational piece provided by the second applicant to this group.
It's probably hard for us to beat that guy. Did a very good job. Yeah, no, no, I got you. They're all great guys, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
How you doing today?
Sir, how are you?
Wonderful, have a seat.
Thank you very much.
How do I say your last name?
Gonyar.
Gonyar, Michael Gonyar. Hi, Michael.
Michael, Mike?
Mike.
Either one.
Okay.
I've answered the worse.
Yeah, yeah, understood. So, we're gonna ask you a few questions, I think we have about twelve of them. When we're done, you'll be able to ask us only three questions, not twelve, joking, you can ask as many as you'd like. We'll go over a few details, and I'm not sure if we're gonna make a decision tonight, and we'll talk about that in a little while. All right?
Sure.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Would you like a water or anything?
Good for now.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
What do you feel is the most important quality of someone in a command staff position?
Uh, trust. It's really the foundation of, of any successful person, administrator, leader inside any organization. It's the foundation that we base everything off of. People have to trust me within the organization, people outside of the organization have to trust me. The chief has to trust me, you have to trust me, and then that is all reciprocated back to everybody. It just makes for a better collective effort, I think.
Okay. What is the biggest challenge you will face in your new position?
I feel it's probably gonna be developing the relationships with the people both inside, again, inside and outside the organization. I'm not from around here, I don't have any previous ties with anyone within the community or within the department, so not to say that it's gonna be impossible, but it's probably the most, biggest challenge coming in initially, is to, you know, again, gain that trust amongst everybody, listen to people, gather information, and start to move forward in progressive manner.
Okay.
Thank you. Mike, did you apply for this position when it was posted as the captain's position? And what, and what made you decide to apply for deputy chief?
I did, when it was posted as a captain's position, yes. Then, I was notified that the position had changed, I was still qualified individual for the, the spot. And I think either way, the responsibilities would, would be the, you know, the same, or close to the same, judging in the conversations that I had with the chief, either by phone or an email, and then doing research on the community and the department. Either way, it was gonna be a challenge. Either way, I felt like I was prepared for that challenge, and I wouldn't have wasted my time, your time, and anyone else's time, if I don't feel like I couldn't bring everything that I've worked for to the table to make a successful candidate and, and provide in a positive manner to the chief and the community.
Good, very good.
Mike, how will your unique qualifications help the Southwick Fire Department make a smooth transition from BLS to ALS?
I've had the, uh, the privilege, I've been lucky enough to work in and be affiliated within several different departments throughout my career. Grew up in a small town, understand how small-town politics works, how the combination Fire Department works, the challenges that go along with it, departments that are, you know, comparatively to, to the size of Southwick, some are bigger, some are smaller. Taking all that knowledge, putting it together, and then, in some of those departments, also being directly or indirectly involved with transition processes before, both in Auburn, Douglas, and now Southbridge. And again, taking all of those things, all those pieces of the puzzle, putting them together, understanding what worked, understanding what didn't work, what works for this state, what works for this area, this region, and for a department this size, and then, and the needs of the community, and then just putting that plan together and, and moving it forward, and understanding how, you know, the, what would probably be the best successful path in doing that.
Uh, follow-up?
Yep.
Which, which department that you work in do you think is the most similar to Southwick?
I would say, um, there are two departments. One, the department I started with in Douglas, relatively the same population, same call volume, went through the same growing pains. It was definitely a struggle within the community to get people to understand what the benefits were, bringing the ALS service and the added costs, and, you know, going through cost-benefit analysis and showing that it was really the right thing to do to provide a level of service to everybody, to the community and our mutual aid partners. Dudley was another comparative department that kinda went through the same thing. I wasn't directly involved in that transition. Dudley was another comparative department, um, that kinda went through the same thing, I wasn't directly involved in that transition, uh, I was lucky enough that after I moved to town, got on the, uh, fire department, uh, immediately after I moved to town, and understood again how the dynamics of a small combination department in a small town work. You know, it's, it's, every town is unique, but in the big picture, a lot of the same issues continue to arise and arise, and then again, through the years, I've understood, you know, again, what's the best way of going forward, and getting everyone to have that buy-in, getting everyone to understand, and I shouldn't say everyone, it's never gonna be a unanimous thing, um, and choices like this are not easy, and they're not an easy sell. But again, knowing the right strategies to use, to come forward collectively with the town, with the department, um, usually has a good end result. Thank you.
Have you personally ever been involved directly with a BLS to ALS transition?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mike, which area do you feel you are stronger in, fire or EMS, and why?
Obviously, I'd like to say that I'm a well-rounded candidate and well-versed in both of them. In this position, you have to be, taking on this responsibility, you have to be. I don't wanna sound wishy-washy and say that I have pros and cons in either one of them, but I guess in the end of the day, yeah, I, I have pros and cons in either one of them, I have, you know, experience on one side versus, you know, different experiences on the other side. I've been a firefighter, EMT, since I was eighteen years old, got my EMT basic on my eighteenth birthday, took the class before, I was ineligible to test, uh, got my firefighter one-two on my eighteenth birthday. It was something that I knew from a young age that I had to be well-versed in both aspects of the job. Now, obviously, we do far more volume-wise, uh, with EMS, so as far as, uh, volume and repetition, seeing different cases in different, um, environments, yeah, that builds a lot of experience over the years, and I've been proud to work with some good people and some great places to build that experience. The fire and rescue aspect of things, it's always gonna be there, and I think you still have to stay cutting-edge on those, um, skills, because if you're not gonna be doing them as frequently, yet the risk is still the same, if not greater.
Yeah.
You have to stay sharp on that, you really do, it's imperative.
Firefighters run in your family?
Yeah, second generation.
Okay.
Father, yeah.
What was your biggest professional failure, and what did you learn from it?
I had an opportunity to, uh, go through a process similar to this one, uh, in another community closer to, uh, where I reside now, and it was really one of the first, this is a few years back, really one of the first processes I've been through. I felt confident going in, um, and it didn't work out. And what it taught me was that there's always, obviously, room to improve, and I kinda knew that going in. I was disappointed with the result, um, but it not only provided me a learning tool, 'cause I had gone through the process, learned about assessment centers, interview skills, and everything like that, and it was the first, one of the first actual promotional interviews that I had been to. So what I took out of it was, again, you learn from it, you understand your mistakes, you get positive feedback, and then you build off of that, and you move forward. You have to go into any level of, of any part of any organization, knowing that at some point you're gonna fail. You have to try to minimize the risk, but you have to be understanding that that's part of the responsibilities that go along with any position. So, you shouldn't be afraid of any type of failure, you just have to learn from it and improve upon it in the future.
Excellent. Okay. What is the best training experience you have had?
I would say, I've been fortunate, again, fortunate enough to be involved in a lot of different aspects of training, both in fire and EMS. I would say that I've learned more being an instructor and a coordinator from my students than I ever have in any class that I've ever taken. And it's not, it doesn't have to do with, obviously, the technical sense of the job, it has everything to do with seeing what they bring to the table, looking at a young person and seeing their motivation, and reminding myself what the right things are about the job, what got me into this profession in the first place, and serves as a motivator to continue to move forward, make other people better, make myself better, and then, you know, teach them to contribute to their, whatever organization they're involved with. That's been the most gratification that I've ever had, and the most valuable thing that I've ever taken out of any type of training that I've ever done, you know?
Thank you.
Mike, if, if you had the opportunity, how would you restructure the department? In parentheses, full-time, part-time, volunteer, et cetera?
Well, the first thing I would have to do in that situation would be to listen. I wanna listen to the community, I wanna see what their wishes are as far as the service delivery that they expect and they desire, listen to elected officials like yourselves, and listen to the people inside of the organization as far as what they feel would be the best-suited, uh, again, service for the community. I could come in with thousands of ideas, and, you know, obviously, I am coming in with a lot of my own ideas, but they hold no weight, they hold no merit if they're not good for the town of Southwick. So, my first step would be to come in and then listen, and then again, based on what people have to say, the feedback that I get, conversations, and the communication that goes on, then we move forward from there. If people desire that, they want a full-time department, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, at a paramedic level, running at least one paramedic ambulance with fire coverage as well, then we'll do that, we'll put a plan together, and it'll be effective. If they want something in between, that's fine, too. If they want a completely called department that runs a BLS service, they don't wanna spend the money or make the commitment, and the people inside aren't willing to have buy-in and join, join onboard, then, then that's fine, too, we'll put a plan together, but no matter what the plan is, I can guarantee you it's gonna be the best plan that we can put forward. And again, through collective effort, chief, myself, people inside the organization, and people like yourselves, we're gonna do the best we can. It's just a matter of, to what level.
Good.
What do you think are the three biggest challenges facing the Southwick Fire Department today?
Well, again, um, you know, through the research that I've done, conversations that I've had briefly with the chief, you know, this, obviously, this transition happens to be the big one, it's why, one of the reasons I chose to put it in the packet. It's, it's a very, what I provided you was a very down-and-dirty, broken-down, um, step-by-step process, and, and things to consider when you, when you transition from BLS to ALS. With that said, it's a difficult process, and it can be a long and drawn-out process, there's a lot of moving parts to it. Um, and again, you have to have the support of both your internal and external stakeholders from the organization and within the community, um, without it, it's not gonna be successful. There has to be a, a level of understanding, and has to be a level of need to go along with it. To kinda piggyback on that, uh, if you're gonna continue to move forward with an ALS transition, uh, you have to start to develop the people inside your organization, um, to not only, again, understand the vision and the mission moving forward, but also to have them play an active role in that. It's not something that myself or any other candidate that you choose is gonna come in and single-handedly do, it's gonna be a collective team effort, from the bottom to the top, from the most senior people to the most junior people. And again, it's not gonna be a unanimous, uh, kind of support, and I think some decisions may not be popular, but you can't expect to have a popular decision, you have to remain focused on the big vision. I think, thirdly, um, is just while that is, if that, again, is the, is the choice that we make as a community, um, to make sure that our other services don't slip or falter, that this is in the spotlight and everything else gets kinda pushed under the rug, if you will. You still have to maintain a high level of readiness and preparedness for whatever comes down to, on, down the road. Fire departments like Southwick and, and any other community around here or in the state really can't afford to be just a fire department anymore, they really, the term has now been thrown out, all hazards department. We really have to be prepared for, really, the unexpected. And it's a hard thing to do, to be prepared for something that you are not really sure is gonna happen, but you kinda have to expect it, and I think anyone of us can agree that turn on the news, and something incredible has happened in this world, and I'm not saying it from a positive standpoint, I'm, I'm saying it, would you ever think that something like XYZ has happened? And we're really seeing a trend that doesn't happen in big cities anymore, it doesn't happen in other parts of the country anymore, it happens everywhere. So, with something as simple as some god-awful thing occurring in this community, I have to ensure that the people that work with the Southwick Fire Department, the firefighters and EMTs, are prepared for whatever comes down the road. Again, it's not an easy task, and we can't lose sight of that, we have to really be on our game twenty-four-seventy, and that's a challenge when it comes to a combination department, when you, when you say that many of your members have, uh, responsibilities outside of this department, they have other jobs, they have families, they have all sorts of other responsibilities. Maintaining their focus and doing their due diligence and making sure that they're, they're putting their best effort forward is, is definitely a challenge, but it's one I can handle, it's one I'm up to, um, up to that responsibility, and it's something that I'm gonna do my very best on.
Thank you. How would you promote a fire public safety awareness issue?
There's a number of different ways you can do it, and it's beneficial if you use more than one channel, uh, to, to reach the people. In this community, you have all sorts of different demographics, you know, based on the information I got, you have twenty-four-hundred people eighteen, uh, eighteen years of age or less, three thousand plus, fifty years of older, and then the rest, everyone in between, that's, that's a big spread. So, in order to make your program effective, depending on the population that you're targeting, you have to use a number of different avenues, you can use social media, uh, cable television, um, you can just get out there and kinda where the rubber meets the road, and, and get out there, be in the public eye, and meet people, and, you know. One of the things I included in the packet is something as simple as, let's set up a, a hands-only CPR table in front of Big Y on Saturday, and see how many people we catch, and we should give them a quick five-minute down-dirty thing to, to show them, you know, what the benefits of hands-only CPR is. If we get into the schools and we meet students, and we put forth all sorts of different programs for the students, if we meet the elderly, and we talk about home safety and medication safety, and, uh, home safety inspections for everybody in the community, those are all things that you're meeting different people in different ways, and you're having that interaction with them in different ways. And to me, and in my experience, all those things lead to good outcomes. Again, people work hard for the money, they put everything they have into making a living. To get up there and say that we want millions of dollars to fund our service, and really don't give them a reason why, is, to me, irresponsible, we have to give them a reason, and show them, more importantly, where their money is going. And we can't just be satisfied with the fact that when someone calls nine-one-one in the police and fire department and the ambulance show up, that's all we're there to do, we're not. We're there to be a cornerstone of the community, we're there to be a foundation of the community, and we're there to meet them in good times, hopefully in good times, and not the bad times where they expect us to be there. So, I think community outreach, fire prevention programs, all those things are just, you can't put a cost on them, there's just so much value to them.
Thank you.
Last question. What's an important value to you, and give an example of how this value affects your life?
I would say, from a personal standpoint, honesty is what I would consider the top, along with trust, for the reasons I mentioned before, honesty. And I think they kinda go hand in hand, I feel like they really do, but without being honest, whether I'm gonna give you a good answer or a bad answer, I'm gonna give you an answer, and it's gonna be, uh, the most honest one I can come up with. And I would appreciate for people to be honest with me, even if it's a negative, you know, comment or something like that, some of the hardest things for people to do is to hear that they're not doing a job satisfactory to what other people expect, and that's hard for some people to hear. And again, it goes back to improving upon yourself. So, as far as I'm concerned, I've learned a lot from people being honest with me, saying, listen, maybe you wanna do this better, or whatever you just did, you did really well, and you should continue to do that, and that's really driven me through my personal and professional career. You know, obviously, we know all the reasons why, personally, you wanna be honest with friends, family, you know, for all the reasons that make you a good person. And you take that, those life lessons, you put it to your, your job and your professional career, and you have success.
Very good. All right, that's the end of the questions. Uh, you reviewed the employee handbook?
Yes, sir.
And the Southwick, uh, Fire Department Union Agreement?
Yes, sir.
For everything, okay. Any questions for us?
No, sir, both of them are pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Easily understood, no, no real questions, nothing really jumped out at me.
Okay. Any other questions you made out for us?
Um, just two things, um. One thing that I've, again, in my past experience, has kinda been a, a sticking point for some people, um, in situations like this, is, uh, my current rank, or the ranks that I have hold, held in the past. Uh, I've only obtained the highest rank of, of being lieutenant. I just wanna say that, in my experiences where I've been coming up in the fire service, uh, it's sometimes often, often difficult to obtain a level of rank. I joined the Southbridge Fire Department, it's gonna be ten years, this year going on eleven, I haven't had the opportunity to move up yet, just because of opportunity. There's other departments that have promoted, and typically in my area, they come from within, um, there's usually not an outside advertisement for any type of promotion, and promotions typically don't go through a process as extensive as this. So, to me, rank is all relative, and that's why, again, I've put myself in the position to, uh, have more responsibility, uh, through my coordinating at Quincy County Community College, um, through being the coordinator of recruit, recruit programs, I have a budget, I have a staff, I'm responsible for professional development, I'm responsible for HR. I, I wouldn't get that if I, if I just laid back and waited for something to land in my lap, I went out and I got it. In some cases, uh, the responsibilities that have come with those positions are far greater than someone who may come in and say, yes, I'm a lieutenant, captain, chief from XYZ Fire Department, but I have no knowledge of how the budget works, I have no knowledge about how the career staff versus the call staff work, because I'm one, on one side or the other. So I've really worked hard to So I've really worked hard to be very well-rounded in all the aspects that come along with being Deputy Fire Chief. And if you read something on paper, it might present otherwise, so I just kind of wanted to convey that. Sorry, who are you going to say?
I will later.
I don't want to cut you off. Uh, the second thing is, I did provide three more copies of what I emailed to Cindy today, or yesterday, I should say. But I did include one syllabus from one of the four classes that I do instruct at Quincy Community College, which is more pertinent to, I think, this position. It's an administration class, talks about everything that, again, would be pertinent to the job and everything that goes along with being an administrator in the fire service. So I'd just like to leave those with you as well.
So the population that you're currently employed at is what? The town that you're?
My current rank.
No, the, how many people live in that town that you're currently?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
And lieutenant is as high as you could go, due to?
We have, um...
We see that in this small town.
We have three, three career lieutenants, one captain. They are just responsible for their working group, so there's six people, six firefighters to a working group. We have a deputy chief and a, obviously, a fire chief.
Right.
Again, the lieutenants are kind of just, and not taking away from anything, but they're not really involved in the administrative portion of things, they're more of the operational things. So even if I were to be lucky enough to get in a position like that and earn a position like that, I still don't think I would have had the exposure necessary to be competitive in a job like this if I hadn't taken the added responsibilities on, outside of the department.
Right. Interesting. Thank you. Any other questions? No? You're good, sir? I don't know if we're making a decision tonight, I know we're going to meet, continue our regular business elsewhere, and then we'll bring this back up at some point tonight.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
No, I was just, did you want to make any comments about this?
Unless you guys had any specific questions regarding it, I, I know there's, there's a lot.
Evan Reddick, be honest with you.
Um, I, just something that I felt that...
I think he's giving us has a little bit more to it.
More to it.
Yeah. Well, really, the first pages are the same. The stuff regarding my instructors is at the end. But I just, I think, thought it was something that would be important, that if it didn't come up in question, these are my thoughts and ideas to put on paper, not only transitioning into the position, but also, again, that, that BLS, ALS transition is, seems to be one of the most heavy topics that we're, you know...
Right, that's where we're headed.
Um, I included, basically, again, a breakdown regarding that, that has come from not only my experiences, but is something that's right out of the state recommendations that we found to be successful. It's, for the most part, chronological, it doesn't necessarily have to be that way, but it's, it's a very quick and down-dirty summarization of how everything goes together, but you're looking at at least, at least a year, I would say, to be safe.
Right.
Um, you know, and, and that, that has a lot of variables in it too, yeah. That, not even coming into the position and getting my feet wet, I would give you that assumption to say, and that assessment to say, at least a year.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And we all walk with that. Thank you very much. Well done. Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
A little less than nine hours this time.
Yeah, it's all right. Just a walk out of the park.
You make sure you have a state trooper, don't you?
Every time I...
Good to have.
Yeah, yeah. I keep thinking of that movie, uh, I keep thinking, Leonardo DiCaprio was in it.
The Departed.
I kept saying, oh, God. Hopefully not the guy that dies at the end.
Right.
Now you better not, that's probably not.
Yeah.
How are we doing?
Good.
Sir, how are you doing?
Good, how are you? Thank you.
How do I say your last name?
Stefanowicz.
Stefanowicz.
All right, Richard. Rolls off the tongue.
Yes, yeah, it does.
Good Irish name. That's it. Well, the other side is crowded, so it's a little, little of both.
All right, so we have about 12 questions we're going to ask you.
Okay.
I don't know if we're making a decision tonight, we're going to leave this meeting, go to our regular meeting, and then bring it up at some point tonight.
Okay.
After the questions, you can ask us three or four questions.
Okay. Terrific.
All right, nothing crazy.
All right.
I'm joking, you can ask as many as you'd like, relax. All right. Mr. Mugsy here is going to ask the first one.
Okay. Good evening.
That's another good Irish name.
You need a water or anything?
No, I'm fine.
Ready to go?
Yep.
All right. What do you feel is the most important quality of someone in a command staff position?
He has to earn the respect of the people that work for him, and that's just not given for the title. You have to tell, let people know that you have control of yourself, control of the scene, and you're going to do whatever you can to make sure that they are safe, and that you provide that image all the time, so that there's no doubt. Both on the emergency scene and off, off the emergency scene, I think it's one of those things where you really have to be able to convey that, and walk the walk and talk the talk, and, and really be able to have people trust you. That's really what it's all about.
What is the biggest challenge you will face in your new position?
Um, I would say it's probably going to be twofold, bringing in the new ALS ambulance and the staffing portions of that. Recruitment and retention is huge in the fire service, finding paramedics and keeping paramedics is really becoming a challenge in the fire service across the board. There's a lot of communities in Massachusetts that are suffering right now because they just don't have adequate staffing to keep up with the ALS demand, so that certainly would be a big part of it. And working partner, a working partnership between the career and call forces is definitely something that needs to be nurtured, cared for, monitored, because there's a lot that goes on there. It's two completely different dynamics, but all doing the same job, and trying to promote that is the same job is really a big part of that.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, sir?
Yep.
Um, why is there such an issue with recruitment and retention of paramedics?
Uh, I see it as, as several reasons. One is that the grass is always greener for some people. They want to try to find something that may be a little bit more challenging, maybe in a busier service, so they start in a smaller service, they get some training there, they get familiar with, with their community, with the skills, what the whole system's about, and then they have a little bit more value, and so they can move on to a bigger department. That's one reason. Second is, I think some people find out that this isn't the job for them, which is really unfortunate, because it's a big investment, both for the community as well as the person that's putting themselves in paramedic school, to find out that it's really not what they wanted to do. And the second part is, I think, the third part would be that some people realize that there's really no future in it, unfortunately. Some go as far as they can go, not understanding that that's as far as they can go. So giving people opportunities in the department, letting them know that there's always something more that's there for them, and that sometimes they're going to leave the nest, and we have to support that as well, too. But hopefully, we make it a good enough department that people want to work there and stay there. That's an important part.
Thank you.
Want to be called Richard, Rich, Dick?
Rich is fine, Richard. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Richard, did you apply for this position when it was posted as the captain's position? And what made you decide to apply for the deputy chief position?
Um, I did not apply for it as the captain's position at the time. My wife and I were still a little unsure of some of the residency requirements and what that would have involved. The job is, certainly was appealing to me, and a lot of thought went into it, but I ultimately decided not to, to apply for that position. The deputy's chief position certainly is a little bit more appealing, because it certainly is, it's an up, it's a career move for me, and the residency requirement was very defined, so we knew exactly what we were getting ourselves into, and we talked about it, and my wife is also in a position where she said she's ready for a move, too. So it really kind of came down to a couple of things, if it was the right job at the right time, even though it seems like it was less than a year, probably only six months spanned in between, it just seemed like the right time for the deputy's jo, deputy chief's job.
Good.
transition from BLS to ALS?
Uh, well, when I first started out, I worked in a fire department that had just taken on a BLS ambulance, so I saw the transition from us being first responders to operating a BLS ambulance that was in partnership with the police department, and staffed with one full-time firefighter and one police officer, and it was, it was a system that worked, although some people look at it from the outside and say, how did that happen? But I worked really hard at making sure when I was in South Hadley that we had a very good, solid BLS service, and the goal was then to build the service so that we could then move to the next level, which was, obviously, advanced life support. Powers to be and a couple of other political issues didn't allow that to happen while I was there, and they're still working for, towards that goal. But I'd like to think that in my experience with getting a good BLS service up and running, and holding people to a standard, and really making them be, want to be part of an organization that was as professional as it could be. Moving to the ALS side, I've got over 10 years now as a paramedic, both in emergency medical service, emergency 911 services, as well as fire service. In a community similar to Southwick, I worked for the town of Long Meadow, we had an outstanding ALS service there. So when you see something done right, you know it, and that was definitely a service that was done right. So I'd like to emulate a lot of, a lot of the things, a lot of the properties they had, a lot of the techniques, a lot of the people, skills, and things of that nature, but they also had a great system where they recognized both ALS and BLS as equal providers and just as important on the ambulance.
Have you personally ever been involved directly with a BLS to ALS transition?
Um, directly, no, but I was working for Alert Ambulance, where we had a lot of changes, where although we started out as double paramedic on that, we then went down to paramedic basic, kind of in reverse, so there were some trials and tribulations there, too, so pretty familiar with that operation as well, too. I've worked, like I said, with the BLS services in South Hadley, never got to that level of ALS, but I've seen, I've seen it done right.
Thank you.
Richard, which area do you feel you are strong in? Fire or EMS, and why?
Um, I'm going to say fire, and the reason being is because I pretty much immerse myself in fire right now. It's a lot of extracurricular training opportunities in fire, so that you can go and get officer training programs, tactics and strategies programs, things like that, and those are the types of things I like to do. But I also work part-time at the Fire Academy, which has been an incredible experience for me, because pretty much you're working with some of the best firefighters across the state. Everybody learns everything that, from, you know, from the first day you come in as a recruit, you start to learn, but all the instructors, one of the best parts of working there is you're constantly learning, we learn from each other, we learn from the recruits, and so that's a special part. EMS, as much as I first got into it, I, I wasn't quite sure that it was right for me, but once you see medicine work and you make a difference in someone's life, it takes on a huge role as well, too. So as far as what's more important, I would say that being an excellent paramedic and making a difference in someone's life that way is certainly more important, but the fire side of it is definitely something that I've had more experience in, only because I've been doing that portion a little bit longer, whereas BLS was a small part in the beginning, ALS was, you know, almost half of that, but I've been doing fire consistently right through. Three different departments as well, too, so I've had a great experience both as a call firefighter, a career firefighter in a small department, a medium-sized career department, where I was, you know, on shift with people, so I had a good experience there while I was in Long Meadow, and currently in Granby. System very similar to what you have here in Southwick right now.
Good.
Richard, what was your biggest professional failure, and what did you learn from it?
Um, I, I left South Hadley District Two because I felt like there was something out there a little bit better, and I was, I was a little impatient with the way things were going in District Two, and sometimes I think back, if I had just stayed there a little bit longer, probably other opportunities to make the place better would have come about. So I also feel like when I left there, I left at a very inopportune time, and left a lot of people stranded, because I was very instrumental in the, in the ambulance portion of it, becoming BLS, and there were some great people working there, but it was, it was a somewhat of a burden to them, so I, I had some regrets there, and I viewed it as a failure.
What is the best training experience you have had?
That I've had personally?
However way you want to answer it. What's the best training experience you have had? We've had all kinds of answers.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a whole bunch of, a lot of different things.
For me, it was to say yes to my wife for the last 25 years.
See, that's good training as well, too.
She hasn't trained you yet.
I like to think I'm trained.
Well, it's, because I've been involved in training an awful lot, there's, there's examples of training that's gone really, really well, that I'm very proud of, then there's a couple of things that I've done professionally as far as training was concerned. I'm going to, first of all, I'm going to say that my proudest moment was when I used to manage Hampshire County Fire Defense Training Association. I was in charge of that for, for nearly 13 years, for, for 11 years, rather, and built the program from a six-week program to a 13-week program, with a little bit of resistance from the chiefs that were involved, but I felt that it was the program that the, the community deserved, because it was really a good training opportunity for the firefighters. I did an awful lot of the training myself, I brought other instructors in, and they were all excited about the program as well, too, and when we first started, we all did it for free. Fortunately, one of the chiefs was able to find some money for us, so we were getting a whopping $15 an hour for a Sunday training. But the most rewarding part was to go to the fire scene, mutual aid for another company, and see some of the young firefighters that we had trained, operating on the fire ground, doing it smartly, safely, and knowing that they're applying the training that we had applied. As for myself, I'm going to say that, for me, it has been the continuation of the officer training programs that are available at the Fire Academy. Officer Two was a very involved, very, you know, it's only 60 hours, but there's online stuff and things like that, and it's college-level material, so that was very, it was a great experience, learned an awful lot. It starts to get you into that management role for not just fire scene, fire operations, but the day-to-day operations of the fire department, so that's been great, too. Thank you.
Richard, if you had the opportunity, how would you restructure the department? Full-time, part-time, volunteer, et cetera?
My personal object?
Well, you know.
Um, the system that's in place now works because you have a very good core dedicated group of call members, both on the fire side as well as the EMS side. There's always going to be a couple of openings and a couple of voids, but I think the recruitment intention portion of that really brings them in. As far as change in the department, if it would be at all possible to have a paramedic on full-time at night, so that there's at least one paramedic responding with maybe a call member, so that the ambulance gets out the door as quickly as possible, people get the ALS level care 24/7, that certainly would be very, very beneficial. So that would probably add at least two more people, full-time people, to make that happen. There could be a couple of rearrangements in the shift itself, but I think overall, two more people would certainly give that adequate protection and coverage 24/7.
Thank you.
So what do you see are the big, three biggest challenges facing the Southwick Fire Department today?
Um, you're going to have to grow with the community, it certainly is becoming a place that people want to live. Southwick is growing, and I understand they're putting in some big developments and things, so that's part of it. Bringing in the ALS ambulance is definitely going to be huge, there'll be many different pros and cons. Staffing is certainly going to be an issue, liability becomes a large portion of that, training becomes a large portion of that, equipment becomes a large portion of that, so overcoming a lot of those hurdles. Once it's up and running, it certainly is, is going to be great, but it still needs to be nurtured, so there's going to be some of that. So there's gonna be some of that. And then I think part of it is to grow both of those systems to get them to where they need to be. You know, that the, the town has supported the fire department over the past years with some great equipment and really do support the people that are here that do it on a professional basis as a career firefighter as well as a call. And so that's, that's a great thing. I guess to continue that. But I would say one of the biggest hurdles would certainly be growing the staffing as well too.
Just a quick follow-up. When you mentioned liability, what do you see as liability?
Well, on the ALS side, there has to just be a higher level of supervision only because of the, the involvement of care, the level of care, the administration medications, the keeping of medications, things like that. That certainly add into, into the liability overall. And so it's, it's a supervision portion of it, but also a training portion so that if something is missed by a, a paramedic or something that's overlooked or something that maybe should've been done a different way, correcting that as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have a follow-up. And I don't know the answer, just so we understand each other. So in theory, if you're a deputy chief, it's more administrative.
Mm-hmm.
A call comes in and we're short, oh, we have one paramedic on and we don't have an on-call coming in. Do you go out on that call with your expertise? Or do you say, no, I'm administrative and I'm gonna wait? I, I don't know the answer. I just, when you had said that earlier, two questions ago, I said, oh, that's a great question.
Sir, we deal with the emergency that's in front of us, always.
All the time, regardless of what your position is.
I've never met paperwork that couldn't wait an hour.
Right. And I don't know. I just, when you had said it, two questions ago, I was like, oh, that is, I wonder how that does work?
Right.
You know, the tones go off twice and you're going, okay, enough, I'm going.
Yes.
Right. Perfect. Thank you.
I'm gonna use that with the ALS the next time they audit me.
Heard that line from Clippy before.
Yeah.
It can wait.
It can wait. All right. How would you promote a fire public safety awareness issue?
Well, several ways. First of all, the department has to buy into it and understand the importance of it. And I'm sure most of the people do. We've had, unfortunately, in the Commonwealth, a great public safety programs and fire prevention programs. If I could use the example of sprinklers in residential homes. It's, it's a hot button right now.
Yeah.
There's a lot of pushing and shoving going on at the state level. I think ultimately it's going to happen. But I think convincing the community that it's a small price for them to pay for new construction, to get sprinklers into their homes for new development, is definitely a lifesaving measure. And it's, the way it's constructed, it's, it's different. If they understand the history of it, that sprinklers were designed to save buildings, but residential sprinklers are designed to save you, to give you time to get out of your building. It's not designed to save your house, but to save lives. So that's a good campaign. I think publicly, there's a whole bunch of things out there. It's something as simple as utilizing a local community cable TV, addressing issues at town meetings. If there's a annual town meeting, a town event or something like that, where this is something that's reoccurring, it certainly is important. I think places, venues like the Council on Aging, the public libraries, any type of town meeting, Bingo at the Grange and things like that, to get your message out is important. And you have to keep the press on as well too. And the minute you take your foot off the gas, a lot of those programs die. So it has to be something you believe in. You have to get it out there. We have to support it. We have to be unified to support it and make sure that everybody, it takes every opportunity to make people aware of it. Because sprinklers, again, using that example, it's, it's a critical one. It really is. So hopefully, fingers crossed, a couple of years will be required. Thank you.
Last question, Richard. What's an important value to you? And give an example of how this value affects your life.
To me, one of the most important things that we can do is, is to have integrity, to believe in what we believe in, to understand that other people do have different beliefs and perhaps sometimes need to have some education or some training to get them to, to where they need to be, to understand why we do the things that we do. But to me, integrity in the fire service is paramount. It's, there's so many things that can go wrong if we're just doing something simple like not following an order because we didn't agree with it or disagreed with it. And that's part of that integrity. Being honest, trustworthy is really important as a public official. Anybody that's hired as a firefighter, a police officer, EMT, I mean, they automatically give us the trust of the community. And we have to live up to that. And if we can't do that, that's pretty disappointing to the people that support us and to our coworkers as well too. So I think if you believe in it, I believe in it, it's something that's contagious as well too.
All right.
So that's the 12 questions. Have you read the employee handbook?
I did.
Any questions about that?
Nothing. Yeah, no, nothing spectacular. Yeah, nothing. It was pretty straightforward stuff.
How about our fire department union agreement?
I read the union agreement and...
How'd we do? How did we do with that?
Actually quite well. I thought it was very fair. Yeah. The, the future will tell. I mean, being the first contract and all, it's always, you know, where we go from there. But it's, the language is clear, concise. I think they've covered a lot of the things. I honestly, I love the grievance procedure. I think it's a much more civil procedure than most where, you know, it's not just the letter thrown on someone's desk like, here, fix this. It's more of a, where can we work out, work this out, and talk amongst yourselves, figure out what the solution, what the problem is, kind of work towards some solution. So I thought that was great. And I kinda, I got hung up on that. I read it twice.
Well, we don't have any desk over there, so that's why we did it that way.
Okay.
All right. Do you have any questions for us?
Specifically, no. I just would like the opportunity to be in the department and in the community. It's a fantastic community. The more I research, the more I know, the more I talk, people I talk to, everybody says good things about it here. So I had a nice conversation with Robin Upfront about some of the things that are going on in the future. And it looks like an exciting community and living in the right direction. As far as the ambulance is concerned, it's a big undertaking.
It is.
And there's probably gonna be some apprehension and some, some doubt. And that kinda goes part and parcel with taking on such a big project. But years of experience, again, with EMS in different facets and working for different companies and seeing things that are done right, and how things that maybe could've done a little bit better if they were done wrong, certainly has been a great experience. So I'd like to put that to work.
Wonderful. Well, that's all the questions we have. We're going to go into our regular meeting tonight. We're probably gonna bring it up at some point. I don't know if we're making a decision tonight or not.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
I will. Everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. All right, so we're back in session. We just finished our interview for deputy chief. It is now seven o'clock and we're gonna do public comment first. Anyone has anything they'd like to say, please state their name and address for the record. And if anyone's taping, please let us know. See nothing? All right. First up will be a hearing. What is it? Manoli?
Manoli.
Manoli Pizzeria and Restaurant, LLP, DBA Village Pizza. All right. I'll read the legal at first. Notice is hereby given under chapter 1038 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Manoli Pizza and Restaurant LLP, 515 College Highway, has applied for a transfer of the on-premise all alcohol liquor license 1-2200006-00020-RS-1222 at 739 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Previously owned by EEG Corp., DBA Candlewood Inn, property described, a property description, brick building located in the Village Green Shopping Plaza, westernly on College Highway. Premise consists of a kitchen, dining room, and one room for storage. Entrance on east and west side, enclosed patio, 489 square feet in front of the building. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from EEG Corp., DBA Candlewood Inn, approved new manager. Am I even gonna touch that? Anastasios? How do you say that?
Anastasio.
Anastasio?
Emmanuel Karen Solopoulos.
Wonderful. And also, and also established entertainment license and LLC members. Time and date of hearing, June 26, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's Conference Room, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. So we need to open that and then continue? So I need a motion to open?
Second.
All those in favor?
I just want to acknowledge the applicant has asked you for...
Yeah, he's asked for a continuance due to some, yeah, for some personal issues. So I need a motion to continue.
So what date would you do?
July 24th or August 7th. Let's go August 7th. That good with you guys?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Motion to continue to August 7th.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next hearing. Anything I have to read?
Yeah, you're right here.
I gotta use your names for it.
Yes, thank you. I know my skill set, so that's why I just stopped. glossy eight by ten. Wow, nice. All right. Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Mo's Coffee Shop LLC, DBA Red Riding Hood Basket, Maureen Shea, manager, has requested a public hearing to change the serving area from one floor, total of 1,920 square feet, three entrances and three exits with seating occupancy of 36 and occupancy of 62. First floor and backyard area totaling 4,228 square feet, four entrances and five exits, with seating occupancy of 72 and occupancy of 120 for both inside and outside combined. Also a request for change in hours from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM till 10:00 AM till 9:00 PM. The public hearing is being held on June 26, 2018 at 7:10 or 7:05 PM. So I need, I want to select my chairman, Joe Didi, Russ Fox, and Doug Moldland. So I need a motion to open. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Good. So I'm here tonight to ask you...
You got three copies, guys.
Oh, do you?
That's great.
I have another...
Color and everything. Oh, look at this.
I have one for you, Cindy, just so you're not...
The hood, the hood, the hood.
Um, so I'm here to ask you guys for two things tonight. One is an extension of premise into our backyard and one is an extension of hours. But before we get too into that, I wanted to break down the map for you because I know that it's confusing if you don't know the area very well. So let me just pull out. What I did for the planning board is I took our map, which is here, and I just zoomed in on the backyard so that you could have more detail. So you see the part that says addition?
Mm-hmm.
That's actually my kitchen.
Right.
And then right in front of the kitchen, if you haven't been in the cafe, that's the counter.
I was in the other day.
Good, good, good answer.
Couldn't get past that spot.
Yes.
Two ladies had me for an hour.
Good. So, so you're looking at the outside space that's, that's colored in there?
Yep.
So what I'm asking for, or actually, why I'm asking, last year when I came to you for my liquor license, I didn't actually have rights to the backyard. As of August 1st, I did. It actually was part of the lease for the upstairs apartment. And then once we found out that they were gonna be doing the Congamon Road reconstruction and I was gonna lose parking spots and it was gonna be dusty and gross, and the tenants moved out, my landlord said, why don't you move your picnic area to the backyard? So that's what we've done, is we've moved the picnic tables, which you can see are those kind of lined areas here.
Yep.
Into the backyard. So what I'm proposing is that people would be able to go out this exit right here, right by the counter. And then when they get out there, there will be some type of fenced walkway that's gonna be somewhat temporary just because of snowplows. I actually took a look at Two Rivers Burrito and I took a picture of how they did it, just something, something of that nature, just to designate an area. That's their patio area, because they have to remove it for snow removal as well.
Yeah.
Anyway, so you're gonna walk out the door and there'll be some type of very clear signage that says, you know, that you can have alcohol in the backyard and you have to go this way, or there's no alcohol the other way. And then you'd get to the backyard area, which is all fenced in. We have our main entrance. We also have over here a double wide area. So if there's any type of emergency, you can get in and out, but that is just an exit only. We have windows from the, from the kitchen in the back, into the backyard. And then we also have an employee entrance right there. To help you with my vision, I did bring you some pictures of what we've done so far. So this one that I'm about to show you is just the main entrance area. So I would build a, a walkway up to that. This is just the picnic tables. I tried to make it not look like you could see into our trash bin.
I didn't even know this existed back then.
Yeah. And then this is just kind of a view of the backfield area. So it's kind of, I think it's quite quaint for the fact that it's on Congamon Road.
You wouldn't know from...
You wouldn't know.
Yeah, I didn't even know it was back there.
Yeah.
And Landis already looked at this stuff too.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, as you know, well, restaurants in Southwick are struggling, if you have looked around. And I think a lot of it has to do with minimum wage going up. And I'm trying to find a creative way to expand my business. And one of the things that's really restrictive for me right now is that I only have so much seating. I get a lot of requests for baby showers, art openings, retirement parties, all that type of stuff. And I would say 50% or more of them don't come to me because I can't shut down my business on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, for a shower or whatever. So I think that this would open it up. Last year, I did expand my business, which was awesome with the liquor license. I was able to do a teacher retirement party, so it was after school, and our opening, as I said, and two baby showers that were kind of non-traditional because they were in the evening. And so that's, that's helped me. But basically, I'm trying to find creative ways of using the space that I have. And a liquor license will do that. People don't wanna have a dry retirement party. Do I think that we're gonna be having ragers back there? No. In the last year, like June 25th to June 25th, we did under $1,400 in sales in liquor. So it's not necessarily the liquor, it's the idea of the liquor that people like and why they're coming. They want the atmosphere that we have, but they also wanna be able to offer a mimosa or a glass of wine when they're hosting a party. So, or even just, you know, coming down the bike trail and having a local beer, glass of local wine, which we've stuck to. We haven't done any large beer or wine. We've only done Westfield River and we've done a couple of different wineries in the area, just to kinda stick with our, our mission, which is to support local business and to have something unique. So, so I'm asking for that. And then I'm also asking for an extension of hours. I have no intent of actually extending the business hours. As you can tell, I have a lot of stuff to do at home. I have two kids and two more on the way. So, and we're a cafe. I'm not, I don't wanna do a dinner service, but I would like to open up my, my opportunities, as I said, to...
If you had an event.
If I had an event, as I said, an art opening, a book signing, you know, something that we could do into the evening. And people have been somewhat flexible with the five o'clock, but it makes it harder, makes it a lot harder to get people in there. Yeah. Questions?
Once again, I was there for a good hour and she broke down everything from who buys beer and it's usually one at a time. It's not...
Oh, yeah.
No one sits buying, sits down and has four or five beers. So this doesn't happen.
Nope.
Very lengthy discussion about everything.
With Donna, I'm assuming?
Two of them, I couldn't get away. I think my coat is still there. But, but you're right. It's, it's, that's not the environment there.
It's not the environment.
They come in, they might have a glass of wine and, and they're gone. It's not...
Right.
They're not hanging out.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, I was very impressed with everything they had to offer. And they didn't show me the backyard though. I didn't ask. I see Landis signed off. He was okay with it here.
Thank you.
Is there anything from Mr. Sanders?
He didn't.
Didn't need to, no. Traffic, there's not a problem anyways.
I also have, if you were...
The only thing would be the chief on the back, the gate here.
Yeah, myself and Art conferred on it as far as egress issues and they are all clarified.
Okay.
And there's no, with all that outside, there's no sprinkler issues or nothing because she's not, no, I just, I heard a hundred and I, you know, clicked. So it doesn't, and if you decide to put a tent up, you have to do permitting for that down the road.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah. That's what it'll look like, right? Next would be a tent to cover some of that.
Yeah, or if someone wanted a...
Yeah.
Because you can't control the weather. Someone's gonna...
Party, like, yeah, a shower.
Baby shower or something, right.
Okay, that's, so, that's good to know. And I will talk to this lady as soon as...
The building inspector would be the...
Oh, okay.
Is that a sewer connection there or is that a leach field here?
Sewer. It's one of the last sewers before the rest of Congamon Road is not.
Right. You're like, you're at the end.
I'm right on the end, yeah. And also, if you are at all interested, the Kings, who are our neighbors, are on vacation, but they wanted to submit just a letter that they're in support. I haven't had any problems with my neighbors. I haven't had any problems with my neighbors with the liquor license at all.
Can you read that into the record?
Yeah, Cindy can, the chairman can just have send you a copy for the record.
Yes. I'll put it in her phone. Still, your tongue is up. Wonderful, it's a wonderful thing. Anything from you guys? Any questions?
No, Sergeant Landis did approve the, you have a view of the patio from the kitchen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so he's happy with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two windows for my kitchen.
Yeah, I have, I just said, he said it was all set, he signed the floor plan.
I know that was just an, an issue we've had with some other places and, you know, I'm sure you've read the liquor laws.
Yep.
Supposed to have.
Yeah, she's got a view with those three windows.
View of, of who are the alcoholists and sort of stuff.
Yep.
Yep.
If that requirement is met, I think this is, uh, great. It's a business expanding in the town of Southwick, so.
Is it, is it seasonal there or is it?
My, my license is seasonal and we are seasonal.
Right.
Yeah, we open around St. Patrick's Day and then we close around, um, Christmas Eve. My license is April first to, through Christmas Eve. Yeah.
Any other questions? Now, do I have to, uh, anything from the public?
What about, uh, have you considered parking if you're expanding people from up?
Um, yes.
You have a business next door and you have residents, do you have one?
So, um, two things. One, all the, the neighbors that are budding were notified, correct? Um, and two, um, we already had a picnic area, it just was moved. And so, when we did the liquor license last year, we went round and round about parking and I don't, I don't perceive it being, expanding that much or at all because we still had the tables. We just are now having beer and wine offered at the tables, so.
Moving the tables out of the parking lot into the back behind the fence to serve liquor.
To serve liquor and to actually make more parking because we're going to lose a few spots.
Right, so that added parking spaces.
Right, so we're shifting.
Customers are on bicycles anyway.
Oh, yeah, a large percentage are on bicycles and that was something that was put into consideration last year just because the building obviously wasn't built when we had the same codes and so they kind of, you know, we, we had to weigh all those options and that was.
Bill, can you just state your name and address from the.
Uh, Bill Fraser, one hundred Congamon Road.
So in theory, I know what he's saying, so if you had a, you know, how many can you seat inside or outside versus how many cars can fit in a parking lot with the pizza place running and the barbecue place running? How many spots are there?
It's kind of just a dirt.
Right.
It's not designated.
No, it's not, right.
Right, and I.
It's gravel, it's infertile, it's, it's.
Yeah, and I, I can't remember.
I can show you.
Yeah, I can't remember because.
No, I was just wondering in general, I've parked on it, I don't, is it, is it gravel? I thought it was paved.
One side's paved.
That's right.
And the other side isn't, and actually my landlord has said that when they're done the construction, that he would consider paving it.
Nice.
Which would be very nice, but.
But you guys have both parking lots, I mean, you guys all share.
We all share all the parking lots, that's why I can't remember what the total is.
That's fine, I don't need it. No, because they're sharing everything, it's not like she gets six spots and that's it. You have the.
Yeah.
And if you have a problem with your neighbors, they're going to let you know rather quickly.
Yes, they will.
Do most of your customers come from the rail channel or?
I would say a large percentage, but actually, as the business has grown, we've gotten more people that are driving, which is exciting because I remember when I worked there and didn't own it, there would be days if it rained, there was no one. And now at least like, you know, Sunday morning, we get the, the after church crowd and things like that, which is really nice because that keeps your business going when you have rain every Sunday for two months in the spring.
Yeah.
Are you going to have parties outside?
I'm going to offer it. Um, I mean, that's part of, part of my request.
With the alcohol?
Right.
Outside?
Yeah, that's, that's the request, is to be able to.
Noise buffer, buffering there?
I mean, I don't have an entertainment license, so I don't think that there would be like, um, like, I wouldn't have a DJ or anything. It would be like, as I said, like a birthday party, a retirement party, something like that.
So it's not going to be some, an established, another establishment?
No, no, I'm not planning on putting.
Beer for five or six hours?
No, I'm not planning on putting a band out there or anything like that, I just.
I'm just, you know, we have a couple establishments in town that, you know, are, are noisy, but it's the time of year and.
Yeah.
Residents put up one.
No. No, and I, and as I said, the, the point is to just be able to expand my business and get these parties that ask me, say, I want a baby shower on Sunday morning. And I'm like, I can't close my business on Sunday morning, but if you would like to use the backyard, then it gives us an option.
We get it all the time. We can see like forty inside and they want to do a birthday party with just a child with twelve of his friends, plus the parents.
Right.
You're out of room.
You're at thirty.
You got one chair, you're, you're praying for your customers because you.
Yeah, exactly.
Use your hole inside and we do the same thing, we say, geez, you got the hole outside, welcome to the picnic tables.
Exactly, and that's, that's what I would like to do.
Yeah, it does help. Uh, but there, even though the fencing is there, you still have, next to you on the left is the, uh, barbecue guy.
Oh, yeah.
Then the pizza guy.
Correct.
So, so the fence goes behind you, you can see the back of their buildings.
Yes.
But you're not a budding that neighbor, which would be, you're the neighbor to the left?
Yeah, we're only forty feet away.
Right, so it's like thirty feet left of the fence or the building, okay.
Okay, yeah.
So that's basically what he's nicely saying is.
Yeah.
Good neighbor policy.
Be, be, yeah, I got.
No, I mean, the tenants, the tenants there and the businesses there have always been.
They've been good.
Anytime anybody in the area has had, asked them for something or to do something, they've been right, right on top of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the owner of the, and I'm sure you know, you know, the owner is the problem really.
Yeah.
Businesses and business owners are really important.
Right.
Okay.
Understood. Anyone else have any questions? No. You're good, you're good.
Yep. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, none of this happens till the fencing gets put up, correct?
Right, and the ABCC has to come and inspect it.
Okay.
Right, so now I'm going to invest the time and money to put up the, the walkway fence area.
Right.
And then they'll come out, I know they, my lawyer sent them out last time or whatever, I'll, I'll.
Whatever, right.
And then.
There's a process.
Right, I can't do it tomorrow, I have to wait for the ABCC to.
Schedule it and.
And give me the.
Well, they give us the okay and then we update our license to, to allow.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
If it's signed, maybe?
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Alright. No, I know, I'm just looking down the list.
You are keeping the trains running on time, look at you.
Yeah.
Seven-twenty, right on the mark.
Right on the money, imagine that. Doesn't even know what he's doing. Alright, so acknowledged payroll warrant one eight two nine dated six eleven eighteen in the amount of, everybody swallow, two hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
The next one's a thing.
Oh, I don't even want to go there. Now it's payable, or payables warrant one eight two nine B dated six eighteen eighteen. Anyone want to guess the number, go on once, nobody, okay, in the amount of, that's what it says, right?
Yeah.
Alright. One million five hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and, yes, eighty-three cents.
Yeah, well, a million two and that is death service.
I understand, I still, it's hard to swallow. Alright, acknowledged payable warrant one eight three O dated six twenty-six eighteen in the amount of chump change, two hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and six cents. Do you have anything left, Carl? We good?
Might have to check the calculation.
Yeah, I would check this, yeah. Is accounting here tonight? No?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, they were saying concrete, we might not have the money then. Alright, regular session minutes for six four eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Regular session minutes, six eleven eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Executive session, please. This is good times right here, so I need a motion to approve executive session for June eleventh, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any favors? Aye. What?
In your chair mail is another.
Now, chair mail is the other set, which is the social media policy meeting.
No, those were in your packet.
Okay, so there's another, I don't have my chair mail, so I.
You don't get it.
What minutes were in the chair mail?
You kind of approved.
We already voted on it.
Alright, wonderful.
The social media?
That was the June eleventh.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
The six twenties.
Right, so six twenty meeting minutes, the social media policy.
That was last week.
That was last week.
With town council?
Yes. So I need a motion to approve a little bit.
So the, um, Russ and Doug were the ones that were leaving.
Right, you second to that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I want abstention, I did not make that meeting. Ah, look at this next one.
Oh, man.
Man. I got a guy in the room, we could probably throw it in there too. Alright, so resignation of the fence viewer?
Here you go.
Oh, now I get my thing.
No.
Thank you. Look at that. Alright. Herbert Pace, how old is Herbert?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, he was my, uh, the vice principal in Potter Mill.
He was my principal here at Consolidated School.
Yeah, well, you are much older than me.
Charlie was probably not a joke.
Yeah.
He was on my party line, tall phone. Ray, did he, did he retire before you came through?
I did not.
Yeah, I knew him well, we had several conversations over the years.
Was that called detention?
Detention. Is that what it's called then?
See?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they sure did. Um, alright, so do we have to make a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Regretfully second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great guy. Taught me a thing or two about life.
Yeah.
He's probably still teaching me.
Still comes down to council on aging.
He does.
That would be.
Alright, FY nineteen, uh, appointments to bores and staff appointments.
Is there one for everybody here or?
Here's where your. Your.
Oh, this is mine.
The one that's right, the big thing.
Yep. So this. That's what I was going to do.
It's an old business if you want to take it under order.
Let's do that.
Next page.
Oh, two pages. Big night, big night. Alright, folks, we're going to jump to the war memorial policy, since we have a few gentlemen here that probably can't pass their bedtime. Guys, come on up.
I resemble that.
Did I wait you? I'm sorry. Come on up.
I know two of you weren't here last time you were working, you had a.
Yeah. How you guys doing? Alright?
Good.
Good. Looks like a fence viewer from here, you'd probably be a good fence viewer.
Probably would.
Ah, that's right.
I don't live in town.
Ah, when you move, when are you moving to town?
Well, I get married in January and my lease is up next May.
Oh, there you go.
I'm hoping to make a move then.
Well, now, now he's got to make it to May, he's getting married in January. Yeah.
Right.
I'll have to check the odds.
Alright. So I have that under old business here, correct?
Yes, you do.
No, I know you do, doesn't mean I have it.
Oh, wow, jeez.
I don't see it here, you guys have it?
Here, David.
It's not working out well, is it? Alright, great. Do you want to have time to review this? Sir?
Yep, yep.
Any thoughts?
We went through it at the last meeting.
We did.
No, I think this captured the spirit of what we wanted to do.
Right.
We got the consensus of all the groups.
Is there any clerical issues, Doug, between the clerk and all, everything's dotted eye and good and good?
I checked with the fence viewer.
Checked with the fence viewer? Alright. Alright. Gentlemen, any questions? You're happy?
Pretty straightforward.
It is, it really is. And, uh, it's great that you guys came together with this. You know, now we'll look down the road for monies, of course, and.
Sure.
And move on as we go. But don't bug me about money for about two months, please. Because I'm, I'm broke.
That was good.
I, uh, I will mention one though, I don't know if it's time to bring it up while I have you, um, with the current panel that we put on in twenty sixteen, um, when we have the, uh, sandblasters come out to do some touch-ups on the old panel. Maybe a good time to include Beirut, since we do have two individuals from this community who served there and of course, one was killed. And the other actually works for the town, Todd Wescott, was also there, uh, during that time period, so I thought maybe that'd be a good time. Good time to add that to the, to the new panel.
Honestly, just ring my bell a month before, or a month and a half probably before. We want to do it so we can get in contact with those individuals and get that ball rolling, because they don't seem to run right out when you want something sand blasted.
Right, when do they usually come out? October?
Whenever we call them.
Who's that, is that Chuck and his guys?
Yeah, that's where we, we use Chuck and, and that same crew that, that the.
They do good work.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, they're doing good. Yeah, they do. They're doing good.
Yeah, we're very happy. Um, so yeah, just, you know, right on my cage ahead of time, not the day before a parade.
No.
And, um, we'll, we'll get it done in time for the next, uh, ceremony that we have off there.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, it's gonna be the 100th anniversary of World War I this year, and Veterans Day, of course, falls on that, so it'll be a good time to recognize those guys, I think.
Sure. Been very active, I think, in the last few years when they came to that memorial, and, uh, and, uh, we've come a long way. It's amazing how people come out and tell us what we spelled wrong, or our predecessors didn't spell right, or dotted I's, and it's, uh, and they can fix it. They've been great, you know? I had a guy write me a letter and send it, and all this commotion. I'm looking at the name. Yeah, it's my cousin. Couldn't call me. Couldn't call and say, hey, Joe, my T is an I or something. Oh, no, he had to send the letter.
Your cousin?
Yeah. I still meet him. Didn't miss. Alright.
So there are two of the signatories he had today, but VFW, I suppose we could give it, there could be some sign-offs, and then we could give it to Troy, and he could have Ryan sign off on it.
Sure.
Because he was here last time.
Uh, Dylan was here.
Oh, that's right. Dylan said it.
Yeah, both of them.
The vice commander.
Right.
Yeah, he worked second, so.
Yep, not a problem. Make that work. Alright, so I need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion with just the chair to sign?
So moved.
Oh, glad that...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I sign this copy, Cindy?
We're gonna give you a few, just something.
Oh, okay.
I mean, Troy can take them.
Yep, not a problem.
Then Rick can sign them after you get something.
Give me yours, too, or two enough. You wanna sign all three of them? Thank you, clerk.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so, well, how do you wanna do this? Give each one?
No, you'll give all three to him. He'll sign them, and then he's gonna give them to...
Beautiful.
To Troy, and Troy will take them back to...
We expect them back tomorrow by 9:00 AM. Thank you.
You probably, you probably get them the next day. Go and run out to Ryan.
I'm joking. Great. Anything else you guys wanna talk about?
Do you want them, David?
Yeah, when you get time. I have a secretary for that. My clerk takes care of all that stuff.
Yeah, maybe you can, she can teach you how to write.
No, that's a lot of...
Hi.
Once again, Mr. Pace.
It's easier for me to forge it.
You're thinking cursive, I guess.
Yeah. And the short version is, I got a call, I probably said this once already, two months ago from the bank, saying, oh my god, two of your checks got stolen. They've been signed. We're on top of it, Mr. Diddy. And I don't, okay, great. So like a week later, we get everything in the mail, and my wife says, oh no, that's my husband's signature. She's got my signature down very well, and I go to sign something that's forgery. Yeah. Literally.
Lovely.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Have a good time.
I have my mother's down pretty good.
The matrimonial lawyer.
Oh, yeah. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm well-trained.
Now, does this have an extra sheet in there for something?
Yeah, you can take that, too.
That comes off.
Oh, yeah. He's gonna attack.
They're just extra assignments if you guys are interested in doing sidewalk repair, or anything else you might want to do.
You don't need to take that.
You already got that.
You don't know what you just signed up for.
Yeah. Alright, well, thank you for your time, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another well-done job.
Thank you very much.
You walk out, take your photos. Thank you.
Bye, Richard.
You can call the granddaughter there. That one's... Alright, so we're back to the reappointments.
Maybe we could do some of the easy ones tonight.
Alright. Russ, which ones will be the easy ones tonight?
I think police...
Let's go, Russ. What do you wanna do?
Fire are easy ones to do.
Fire's not in. Fire's not even here to submit anything yet. Fire, uh, police.
Charlie, yours, then?
He gave it to me tonight.
Alright. So what are you thinking, Russ? Everyone you suggested isn't here.
Cops are good.
Cops are good.
You gotta be good.
Alright.
I can't even find mine. I, I...
I'd put forth the motion for the police department as sent forth by the chief.
Say a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rest up to you. The animal inspector.
We could do building inspector, supervisor of building and grounds, alternate, uh, building inspector, neutral aid.
Yep.
Sealer, weights, and measures.
Now, that would go off, because the mayor wants to hold off on that, because that's gonna come as a memory.
Suggesting, but he's motioning.
And then I'm gonna ask him to do that when he's done talking.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so calling.
Alright, um, now the gas and plumbing inspector, we changed that, correct?
No, Elliot, no. What, what Randy had removed, Elliot has the cross-connection inspector.
Oh, okay.
So he's still the gas and plumbing, and Glenn is still the...
Right.
Okay, so that would be...
You could still do.
Wiring inspector?
Uh, would be Johnson. You're still keeping Mark until we have the MOA signed with, uh, Westfield?
Okay.
Okay.
They would be the, Westfield would be the primary call.
Right.
Town clerk.
Keeping town clerk.
Uh, that you have to do with the chairman of the Board of Assessors and the chairman of the FinCom under the special act.
Okay.
So that you can do at another, you could bring those people in on another...
Oh, right.
Uh, director of public works.
Yeah.
Special assistant DPW, tree warden.
And moth inspector.
And moth inspector.
Moth inspector.
Right. There's a lot of moths going on up there.
Yeah.
Agricultural committee?
Yep, I don't see any issues there.
Alright, animal control. Uh, we have to hold off on community preservation because we got vacancies.
Yep.
And conservation, we got vacancies.
Yep.
But...
Con...
Jerry Padrian.
I gave you a note in your chair mail to...
We did have a letter of interest from Jerry?
Yeah.
I would be happy to make him part of the conservation commission.
Yeah, because they're having trouble getting a quorum.
He's done a great job on the sewer.
Absolutely. We should just circle that back. Get these ground balls out of the way, come back when we're back.
Right.
Alright, um, council on aging. Is Herb still?
Yeah, he's still on there.
Joan is still? I thought Joan, uh, we switched that around. Could we check into that one?
Didn't that come from them as a letter, Cindy? From the council on aging?
I...
I thought you got a letter from them.
I did. I could check on it.
I would hold, put that, put that off.
I'll hold, but let's see if you got the letter.
Cultural council?
Yeah, you got like fourteen members, and they can go two, three, two, three-year terms at a time.
Okay.
They're actually state-appointed, too, aren't they?
No.
They're there.
Selectment appointed.
Selectment.
EDC.
Yep. EDC is okay? Election and registration?
You know, that's statutory.
Right.
Fence viewer is vacant?
Fence viewer, I think that's pretty much, uh, an honorary thing now because of liability issues, so that might be going the way of the dinosaur.
Like the field driver?
Right.
Which was in the budget for a buck for thirty years?
Right.
Or three hundred?
Right. Fire, forest fire ward is an easy one. Graves officer, John is...
Oh, he's still going strong.
Still going. Um, I know we got openings on the historical, because we had a resignation.
Right, but these are the four still current ones.
So current, so we can do those.
Right.
Uh, late management, and plus they submitted a name of an individual, right?
So hold that one.
Norm Cheever.
Norm Cheever. Uh, lake management canal commission?
They gave the list. It's one of those sheets.
It's Norm Cheever.
Uh, municipal hearing officer, parking ticket hearing officer, uh, sewer implementation committee, and I think all those I'd make in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will go back to... The, where was the vacancy, uh...
Conservation.
Conservation.
There was a, a letter? A letter of interest tonight.
Well, yeah, it had been in for a while. Once you had to give notice.
The name for that was...
When Frank was leaving.
Jerry Patrick.
It's, yeah.
Right, and he's willing to leave the sewer committee.
The anti-abuse folder.
We would leave the sewer committee to be honest with you? Okay. We had a motion to accept the...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we can vote on the conservation at the same time. Motion to approve conservation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and what else was there? Um, lake management. Norm.
An associate member.
Correct, because of vacancies.
And that name was?
Norm Cheever.
Norm Cheever.
Need a motion to accept Norm Cheever's?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then a motion to accept lake management.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
That's good, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so...
Um, who else do we have? Cindy, where do we stay with Park and Rec?
Now, Mister...
No, but it's posted, right?
Yeah.
So it's still upposted.
Yeah.
Still an active posting.
Yeah.
So you have an active posting on Park and Rec.
Alright, and we're looking for a spot on the CPC also.
Right, you have some vacancies.
Good for now?
Good for now.
Okay.
What's the post-close date for Park and Rec and for CPC?
Park and Rec is...
Carl, can you make an arrangement to get the FinCom and the assessors in here at the DPO?
Next meeting?
Yeah. Get on that car. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's a special one.
July 6th.
July 6th.
Thank you.
Is that for both? Or is that Park and Rec?
CPC. There's a folder up here. I think I did the note the same day. I'll have to check that for you.
Okay. Alright, so that's, this one over here, Cindy. Alright, 3A.
What do you got for me?
Well, I'm just, I gotta stack here. I mean, don't, we don't need the whole thing.
Oh, boy.
You can't screw it up. I can't screw it up, but I'm not gonna try to. 3A, Southland Community Development Program, federal fiscal year 2016. Financial warrant number 19. This is what PB's, this is Planted Valley Planning Commission.
Yeah, it's just a regular one.
It's another bill in regards to...
CDBG grant administration.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like I already signed it.
That's why I said reaffirm.
Reaffirm. We just reaffirmed it. Beautiful. Alright, 4A is, uh, the sixth donation for 2018, made to the Southland Police Department Citizens Police Academy. Um, and it is from...
This is Albert.
Louis Albert. My first one to get to say that, huh? That's your first time? Uh, who resides at One O'Two Lakeview Drive. Thank you for the $25 donation. We appreciate it. And the chief has sent her a thank you letter. So need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, 5A, heavy equipment, annual bids. Two years ago, Crest View was awarded the heavy bid, contract, now it's on your contract.
Yeah, we have one more year which you can renew.
Yep, and this little bid price of one, two, three did not change. I appreciate that, Crest View, very much. That's great. We'll find out what the work recommendation is. Yep. Need a motion to accept Crest View as our, um...
Heavy equipment.
Heavy equipment go-to specialist.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, Randy, we appreciate him not going up on the price. You know, it's funny, because three years ago, when I brought that up, it was a pissing match, you know, why we did that. We had so many other contractors in town that kept saying, oh, they always get the work, they get the work. Nobody submitted a bid, you know, so it's great, uh, we're still in town, and they're, um, willing to work with us. We appreciate it. Alright, 6A, select board partial release of right of first refusal under chapter 61A.
That's a continued carve-out of the waterman property.
Yes, it is.
No surprises there?
No, no, they've, they've been doing, going right along over there.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that favorable?
He actually couldn't get in today to give him the application, but it's basically the same exact thing as last year.
Except there'll be actually a road there this year. Right, yep. So I need a motion to, uh, accept the...
It's good to have a parade on a road.
First responders appreciation parade permit?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the date of the parade is?
No, I'm kidding.
It is June, it's July 21st.
21st?
July 21st. July 21st?
Yeah.
Also in front of us is a one-day, one-day beer and wine license for One Call Away at Wally Park for that same event there happening.
Same thing they did last year.
Yep, so the motion, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um, I don't know what we do with the police on that. Do we waive the officer for that?
It'd be whatever you did before.
Okay, whatever our standards are.
Right, whatever the police require.
That one was if needed.
If needed. That's fine.
It's more of a medium turn-off family event.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It definitely was. Alright, 9A, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah, this is required by the Division of Conservation Services for the North Pond Land Acquisition, and the conservation has already taken its required vote. Now, the chief executive officer needs to do it.
That's you?
That's you.
That's me.
Motion for the chair to sign is what he's saying.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, so all those in favor?
Aye.
So what's this get us, Carl? One step closer?
It's just, it's...
Part of the chess game?
The updated requirement with the agency, yep.
Do you have to sign it?
Yep.
Always like me to sign, Carl.
Let me see whether, I don't know why it's not tabbed.
You can, make sure I'm working. So we're still short with a million five.
I mean, the conservation commission already signed. See right here, Joe?
There you go. Thank you.
Conservation already signed off on it before it comes to you, so you sign here.
I gladly sign it. One more year. There we go. Alright, balls are rolling. Ships are sinking. Okay. 10A.
You already did this.
Look at that. Come. It's like magic. Just flying along. 11A, did we already do that? No. High school internship program. 11A. From Randy, well...
Mr. Vacants.
Oh, what vacancies? Tell the other one?
Assessor Vacants.
Oh, right, my express interest in becoming a lake management...
No.
Yeah, I don't know where it is.
Last time I saw him, he was meeting.
You're doing okay.
Alright. 11A, we'll get back to that vacancy later. Uh, Randall Brown, DPW Director, High School Internship Program. So it looks like the school system approached Mr. Brown, and, uh, through the, yeah, the DEA, yeah, program, met with Connor Roy, high school junior, with express interest in, in working with DPW to gauge his future engineering career. Yep. We keep Chris on for the summer, right? He's doing some work for us. Great kid, doing well.
He's out there working on that nipity stuff.
Yeah, I beeped a horny jumps. It's funny. As such, DPW seeks approval to bring Connor on board for an internship. The internship will start September 2018 and continue through January 2019. The hours are between 8:00 and 11:00, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM? That's gotta be...
So if you're okay, we have that...
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't mind. I'm working a little long.
You know that...
Child labor laws.
Yeah, he's fooling. Man, that's my own heart.
That's the DD, the EED line.
Intern unpaid.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll get into that.
Later council.
Yep.
We'll give one of those to Randy, so that he can sign off.
He can sign off that he's not getting paid, yeah.
Right.
Wonder if I can do that. I would love that. Well, I don't get paid. I mean, my whole, alright, great. So this basically breakdown of what he's gonna be doing. Um, DPW's had great success in the last high school intern. We did with Chris Fontaine. We're happy to continue with this program. Wonderful.
It's a great program.
It is. It is.
Yep.
It is, and it's nice to see it this early.
And Mr. Fontaine did a great job at, at DPW last.
We've had people. Police and Fire have had the town halls.
But usually they're scrambling on school restarts, so this is great to have it way ahead of time.
Yeah, Coordinator's Honor Games.
Yeah, she's really, yeah, they're doing a great job. Alright, twelve A, I'm writing on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees for approval to hire. Oh, on this? I don't know.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Alright, so twelve A is from Diane Caruso, the Director of the Southland Public Library. And she's looking on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees for approval to hire, what'd you say, Andre?
Andrea?
Yeah, continue.
Theocles.
Beautiful. To fill the vacant circulation staff position, her pay for the eighteen hour week union position will be twelve forty-eight an hour in June and thirteen forty-eight starting July first.
That's their contract rate.
Yep. She has experience working in the public, in a retail setting, she is familiar with using technology, which means she might, oh, shut up. And she has used the, the, the patron section of our Evergreen software to place holds on and renew items. As a Southland resident and frequent library user, she is familiar with the library layout, which is wonderful. This will be helpful when retrieving items for holds and when helping patrons locate an item. So I need a motion to approve the hiring of this young woman.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Alright, thirteen A. Looks like a big one.
There you go.
ETNL Corp.
Fred, you awarded it at your last meeting, this is just the contract?
This is it, huh?
For the small bridge program.
Look at that, look at that bad boy.
Contractor.
Let the headaches begin.
There's three copies of it on.
Alright, so, you're happy with it Randy?
Very happy, yeah.
One more bridge, huh?
Bridge of troubled water.
Yeah, we still have two left on the shelf? Of, of two culverts left?
Granville Road, which was appropriated for funding this year.
Yeah.
And one more.
There's one more that's been.
Fred Jackson, that's designed.
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah, but design work that we had sitting on the shelf that was.
Two, yes, two more designed.
Sitting up there. Okay, so we still got one on that shelf. Those are the cheapest ones to do, right, 'cause we've already spent, I guess, a million bucks ahead of time. Okay, so I need a motion to, for us all to sign? Or is it just me?
No, it's all of you.
All of us, great.
Three of them.
For the North Loomis Street over Shirtlift. Shirtlift Brook Bridge Replacement Project.
Need a motion?
The motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Compared to Congamont Road, this, they won't even know this is happening.
Crazy. Like eighty places.
Do you all think that one of the counters?
Yeah, I'm sure we missed a few.
Yeah, sure we did.
They said we could stamp any one of those.
Yeah, no, we, I'm sure we did alright.
Anyone that we missed.
Yeah. I have fourteen.
Was it like fourteen signatures?
There were twelve tabs, twelve, twenty-four signatures in the board.
Twenty-four, okay.
In that room? I don't think we, you signed twenty-four?
I signed twenty-four.
We didn't sign.
I might have done a dozen, but I don't think.
Yeah, I'm thinking twelve, we hit twelve, right in the twenty-four.
I'll sign that tomorrow.
I signed Carl's name to half of them.
Yeah, I know, right up on top there, yeah.
The GP was standing there, I signed his name a few times.
All at once, all three, we didn't.
I think there's a peanut butter and jelly stain on the third page, but.
Oh, is that what that was?
That's what it was, yeah.
Well, one, one of you would've missed the hearings with the, you would've missed the Deputy Chief.
I have a resignation in front of me. It is with regret that I, that I tender my resignation.
Certificate on.
Yeah. From the Southland Board of Assessors effective immediately. I am grateful for having had an opportunity to serve on the board, it's a great organization. And I offer my best wishes to the next one. Include with my resignation is my assi, ooh, my keys to town hall. Need a motion to approve.
Well, she's already resigned.
Right, so we don't, we don't need this, alright.
Right, elected people resign.
So I need a motion to post?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So that one would be the, the selectmen with the other members of the Board of Assessors. And it would be for her, the remaining term would be.
No, until the next election.
So the next election for the remaining term. What does she do up against them?
No, it's up to two thousand thirteen.
Oh, so it's just till the next.
One year.
Just.
Be like seven months.
Thank you, sir. Alright. And up next is fifteen A. It's a one day liquor permit for Wally Park, for Team Justice. What's the date? The date is eight four eighteen, from two to four, or two to nine, probably two to nine. So I have on it, it's a fundraiser. Nonprofit. Need a motion to approve, provided Landis and everyone else approves it, correct? Do you anything about it?
Who's sending? He's, he's talking to about it.
Yeah, no, I understand, but was, anything? Is it a, we don't know what it's about? No, no, just, just this.
Can you see if, yeah, okay.
Then it's a fundraiser, that's all it says. Alright, from two to nine.
Just, I'm just gonna say, just because of who's asking for it.
Yeah.
That we table this to our next meeting till we get all the information.
Absolutely.
Just.
Motion to table?
Right.
Yeah, second. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep. What's the date, eight four, we got time.
We got time.
Plenty of time. Should be a little bit more information than that. Alright, sixteen A, Randall Brown.
Oh, I know what this is for now, though, I'm sorry. It's a fundraiser for Lady Don Mashad. Don had a double lung transplant.
Okay.
And, yeah, Team Justice is going to.
Raise money for their medical bills, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll vote on it in the next two weeks, we got time.
They're gonna draw a map and tell us we're gonna do everything.
Yeah, we get tortured, they're getting tortured, it's very simple. Yeah, don't misunderstand our words.
I'll take care of everybody.
Let the torture begin. Alright, sixteen A is Shirtlift Brook Bridge Amendment Request? Already? We didn't even start it.
This is for Gil to oversee, right Randy, the, the construction.
Yeah, that was part of the.
Right, so this is for forty-four thousand, three sixty, and it's already coming out of money, you've already.
Already put aside for it, so I need a motion to approve.
So move. So Board needs, and Mars already okayed the availability.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Who's signing it? Town of Southland, oh, just Joe. Alright. Appreciation, Shirtlift Brook Temporary Paving Costs. And I have Public Library on behalf of Southland. Alright, I'll do this next, this, there's no number on it, it's on behalf of the Southland Public Library Board of Trustees. I am asking to hire Matt Corallo for eighteen hours a week for the summer page portion at the library. This is eleven dollar per hour, eighteen hour week, summer position. Matt is apparently a college student at Sienna College. He worked as a legislative intern for the American Bar Association in Washington DC and has customer service experience when he was at Tellarate United Bank. Wow, Matt's never worked in the library, though, and he does not owe us any money. He will be used in the library frequently for his schoolwork and research. The summer Matt is working on a research project for college and study for the LSAT exams. Both of these activities will be able to pursue while working the library page portion required schedule. I guess I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
You always read everything out like that, yeah?
Huh?
Alright, so, aye, aye, aye.
Yeah.
Did you always read all that out, right, or did you?
You have to.
Yeah.
Well, I sometimes see what we're doing.
Yeah. Yada, 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 is that the?
Yada, 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 yada.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, up next is. So this is a letter from Jerry, okay, this is the.
Did that already?
Yep, done it. Thank you, the minutes we've done, June eleventh.
That's the one we wrote on.
Uh, don't forget the luau at the Senior Center.
Tomorrow.
My costumes at the dry cleaners. I don't think I can make it. Yeah, do they? Well, you're gonna be wearing it, so I don't want to get too old. Alright, folks, don't forget tomorrow, from eleven to one, is the luau at the Senior Center, and I will not be there, I can promise you.
I will not be there.
I have way too much going on. Carl?
I will visit.
Carl's gonna visit for us.
I will swing by on my way out of town, I have a meeting in Southern Connecticut at one.
And could you please explain to them that, oh, you have a meeting too?
Well, no, a little later than one, but.
Okay, so can you please explain to them that we were busy? So we're not, you know.
I think if Doug and I will be there, that'll be fine.
Doug's gonna be quick, though, Doug, Doug is gonna be quick. No, I'm just trying not to cause more trouble than I caused last time because I couldn't make something that. I'd already said I could make and I didn't make, and aye, aye, aye. Yada, 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 yeah, thank you for making a parade a success and taking time to honor veterans from Southland who gave their, the defense of our great nation. Commander, American Legion Post three three eight, sent us a thank you card.
Tell them.
Beautiful, looks nice. And we appreciate that.
Little letter from Randy somewhere.
Yeah, that's all I, I have, what else do you have?
There's a letter from Randy.
Temporary pay.
Oh, that, there you go.
That letter.
That's the letter. Beautiful, that's the last thing in our little packet here. Alright, folks, we asked Randy a week or two ago to look at some of these rough roads that we have, and we know they're just Band-Aids we're putting over them, but we're getting to the point where a Band-Aid's better than what, what they're on. It's a summary of the anticipated costs of providing temporary one inch to an inch and a half thick shim coat overlay on the following streets per unit price for the town's FY nineteen paving contract with lane construction. So basically, it's like we did on that other road by the golf courses. That's, is that what, that was a shim there?
That was a, that was a rough building, I mean, it's similar, I guess.
I hear shim, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are potholes, that was just trying to lift the road a little bit so it wouldn't flip the ice cream trucks. Right, gotcha. Or other trucks too, of course.
On the wrong side of the road.
Yeah, I always drive on the wrong side of the road. Oh, yeah, you, you get, that, that road's interesting.
Well, you wouldn't want that product flying all around in the cab.
No, I wouldn't. Alright, so we're looking at, we have George Loomis Road, uh, location, George Loomis Road from North Loomis Street to the town line, anywhere from fifty to seventy thousand. Klein Road to South Loomis, uh, I'm sorry, location Klein Road, South Loomis Street to forty-eight Klein Road. Forty to fifty-five, then location again, Klein Road from South Loomis Street to Granville Road, anywhere from seventy to ninety thousand. And then Vining Hill Road, we're looking from Davis Road to Ed Holcomb Road, thirty to forty-five thousand.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna work with the town accountant to.
See what we have.
Sweep the accounts at the end of the year, and the Finance Committee has already authorized, it's Chair and Vice Chair to sign off on this, on the funding to be swept from accounts, to be transferred into line items.
Okay.
That would be designated by the town accountant, myself and Randy.
Right.
And that's permissible under the Municipal Modernization Act for year-end budget transfers. So this, and as well as a, uh, so the Board should be authorizing its Chair to sign off on any year-end transfers related to this project and the Unemployment Trust Fund, um, under the Municipal Modernization Act. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then we'll see what we can afford, 'cause we have till July fifteenth to, to, Randy, when are they coming to town, the paving company?
Lane Construction?
Yeah.
We want anything lined up, we're going right now.
But if we, if we determine these roads in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
You have the other ones under the other, other stuff that's been programmed that can be added?
Sure, we can, I know, I talked to Lane Construction, I know that they're busy, but, soon, the better.
Get on the list.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, especially, you know, with the, George Loomis really lends itself to getting done right for maybe that work as, as a good alternate, because I see truck traffic that comes. And I, and I had some of the neighbors come up to me and said, boy, are those trucks that can't go over Shirtlift Bridge gonna now be taking a left to go up George Loomis over those roads? And this was a trailer truck, UPS truck. And, and so when this is shut down, they're not gonna be able to use that alternative route to not go over the bridges in Westbury.
Right.
Yeah, there is a detour plan that, that will be laid out.
So.
But it's not going down to Loomis, we, we would want it going down down there anyways.
Right.
But some people.
But you're gonna.
But you're still gonna have people, you're gonna have the ambulances and everybody else, so we really ought to make that as.
Yeah.
If we could do that like in early August before the actual closure part.
So we're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand roughly for additional paving.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we'll get there.
No, no, I just added everything up on the high side.
But now that the Board has authorized you, well, Randy's got better definitive numbers coming, right, from Lane?
I asked him though, to also look at these, these are mine numbers.
Yeah, understood.
I didn't even think the same ballpark, but I just asked him to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause that will help us determine whether it's two or maybe three.
Right.
So really, that's what we're, we're trying to get to in this exercise.
Right.
I gotta agree with Carl, I think that if we can do George Loomis, I mean, that's in pretty rough shape, and people are gonna be using that as a alternate route.
Well, yeah, Naziak lives down there, he used to be the Randy supervisor for I-.
Yeah. Yep.
I'd certainly, if we can target that before they start the bridge.
You know how does we all get stopped in the grocery stores?
Yeah.
I don't go much, don't go much shopping.
Everybody, raise your hand if you get stopped in the grocery store.
No, they can drive right up and see me, I, I, the bullseye's riding through the window. If the blade, if the, if the blinds are just right, pow, they get me. So we're looking anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and sixty thousand in paving, additional this year.
Right, so we'll.
Which will then not be in our free cash next year, so, just so we all understand that.
Right, I did make you aware of that.
Yeah, it is what it is.
The downside, but we'll, we'll see.
Never know.
May not be an issue.
Right.
But you know, Randy started stocking the salt shed, how's that, is that, what percentage is that stocked for the year end?
Oh, I do have that number, it's about sixty percent over there.
Okay, so that's not bad then. So maybe when he comes up with his other number to deficit spend during the summer, will it be as high as last year's or a little less?
To the, we have more salt now, though, we understand.
Good.
Right, so that's what I'm.
Yeah, so it might be a little wiggle room.
Yeah, 'cause free, don't forget you're used free cash to put against the deficit that you just bought the salt with.
Yes.
To close your books out.
Understood.
But it's great having that facility, 'cause now you can stockpile it and get it.
Just sign that.
You know, and have the stockpile now.
Right, understood.
So what'll happen, Joe, is the, the document will actually be a legal instrument that will have you sign off to you and the other two people from the FinCon.
Right.
All the, from accounts.
Just sign it.
It'll have all the from accounts.
We don't do anything. Sign it, you may as well just sign it. You're the clerk, you're supposed to sign it. Don't ask questions. No, I'll take it. That's a screw order up, give it to me.
I heard you can screw it up, anything we signed, I gave.
Okay. Cool, alright. Yeah, 'cause this is dumb.
Yep.
It's fine. Should be okay.
I don't know.
Alright.
She wasn't okay when we started.
So that's done, that's done, temporary paving's done, approval, that's done.
Ah, we have decisions in town.
Alright, so what do we have left here?
Ad hoc open.
Ad hoc open space and committee.
You got your names.
Could we make a motion then?
Hey, Ruston, you get this.
Yep, make a motion for those.
Motion for the ad hoc open space and recreation committee, which would be Dennis Clark, designated by ConCon, planning board would be David Spina. Spina, thank you, CPC would be Bob, I call him Horchak, but it's Horchak. Uh, parking rec would be Mike Shea?
Shield.
Shield. Parking rec again, Dave Delory, and our selection board designated Russell Fox.
That's a good group.
Oh, citizen Craig Samuelson.
And what's good is.
That's a great group.
Craig was on it the last time, Dennis was on it the last time, so that we'll have some continuity and hopefully not make mistakes.
Alright, so I need a motion to accept.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we sign this one? Thank you. Snow and ice policy work session, I have to go see Randy, and I have not. I promise you next week, as soon as this race is done, I will be over Randy. I'm thinking Tuesday. Uh, update on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary meeting.
We had our first meeting.
Okay.
Our next meeting is July sixteenth at six thirty PM in the auditorium. Uh, we had approximately twenty people. Some people want to be voted as official members and sworn in.
Nice.
And some people just wanna be volunteers. We're still trying to recruit more people. It was pointed out that a lot of the people on the committee that make it up are, um.
Old.
Older individuals.
Year age, Russ, kinda?
And older.
And older, okay.
And that perhaps if we're trying to make this, get kids involved in this, that we should try to get some younger, perhaps some people with kids in the school system would be great, uh, if they would come out and volunteer to be on the committee to get their input.
They're on summer break right now, but I'm sure they'll get back to you.
But we, we have begun.
Okay. Did anyone that was interested before that sent letters, and did we contact them about the meeting?
They were there, weren't they?
They were there.
Yeah, everybody's been contacted that wants to be.
Can you have?
Yes, I have a, a go on email list now.
Do you have the names of the people that wanna be elected or appointed?
Yeah, I have their sheets.
So we could do that, perhaps, Mr. Chairman, at the next meeting? Because that would be before the 16th, and we could have maybe the assistant town clerk or town clerks where people are.
And Cindy can just, when, at the next meeting, Cindy can line one of them up?
Okay.
Right. And if the press could throw a quick letter out there when you're done texting on your phone about something to do with.
Promoting.
That's fine. Promoting it one more time, please.
Yeah.
The 250th.
He did, right.
He did. No, 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 I know.
He did.
You know.
What do you mean, as far as the meeting on July 16th?
Yeah, we're gonna start pointing people to the position, so.
Yeah, we can do something quick, whether it's an article or just a quick release.
Yeah, quick release, you know.
Still looking for volunteers.
Yep. Stop by Southwick Forest any time, talk to Russ Fox, Joe Diddy, and Mogul's usually out of the country. But you can, you know, reach out to any one of us or, you know, City Hall.
Sounds good.
Town Hall.
Town Hall.
And get that going. Beautiful. Alright. Deputy Chiefs finalist. What are you guys comfortable on doing tonight?
I think we have three great candidates, and we gotta, we gotta make a tough decision. And I was kinda wondering if Chief Anderson, since he went through the process and Carl went through the process. But the chief is the one that's gonna have to work with the individual if he wanted to give us some guidance.
I think your hands are, it's interesting. You brought me three candidates that were great. I didn't expect all three to interview as well as they did. You guys did a great job.
That's what I was. I was to give you a pool.
But in the same breath, we spent $9,000 for an assessment. It looks like.
Six.
Oh, six, I'm sorry, six. I included something else.
Yeah, but you know, that's set up, you set that up anyway.
No, I realize that, but I think it helped. You had three great people in front of us.
Right.
Really, I thought. In different age groups, different in where they've been in life and where they're going.
Small dollars for an important process.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not complaining about the process. It just, it looked like you had three decent people. And I didn't know one from the other, and I'll be honest, I haven't looked at their packets. I haven't had time. So I went in blind, blind. And I was impressed with all three of them. I was surprised. Usually there's one or two, and there's always, you know, a third that's okay. But each one of those guys had a quality about them that would work in my eyes. So it is a tough decision. Yeah.
I mean, if you're looking, you know, when I look at it, the one gentleman from Virginia, I think, would be a great fit with the personality and working with people. The other gentleman, Rich, who was the last candidate, with full disclosure, worked for me at Grandi at one point. He was in a different place in his life.
Yep.
And I think he's, seeing him come through the assessment center, I think proved that he's come into his own. And I think he'd be a strong candidate and familiar with his strengths. I'm familiar with his weaknesses, quite honestly.
Right.
And I think that the other candidate, Mike, the second candidate, brings a strong business sense to the table. Really hard to split hairs. I would lean towards Rich at this point, because I know what I can do with him. I've worked with him before, and I know what we could accomplish. With that being said, the other two are strong candidates, and the gentleman from Virginia would fit our characters perfectly as well, too.
Yeah, I was impressed with him. Opening the door, being the first one. I didn't know what to expect.
Whoever you select, and we come to terms with, that person would go through a professional development process to become a deputy chief. Any one of them would have to go through that, to be part of their training, just like we're doing with the police candidates now.
You know, the transition of the ALS obviously is a big factor.
It is.
And keep in mind, we've done a lot already.
Well, and it was interesting listening to these guys. I'm like, so you did all your research. You would've thought they would've noticed we've done, right, the process has started. But all three of them kinda were vague about where we were in it.
Right.
Which is fine.
And some of it's close to the vest.
Which is fine. Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's reflective of where we are. We're really, really stepping into it. We've done a lot of the groundwork, but we haven't.
Right, absolutely.
You know what I mean?
And our third-party consultant is there to walk with us through that for that first year. So it's not gonna be 100% on their shoulders.
Right.
The liaison with the doctors and OMS and all that's in place to teach the right way to do it, no matter who's in place.
Right.
And your contract language is in place. That's a good, that's an important thing. You have the contract language in place to have the incentives to convert existing people.
I too will echo the sentiment. I mean, there was three very, very strong candidates. There was a very productive interview process as far as, and obviously it had been a rigorous process to get there, because you came with three very, very good candidates.
Yeah, I was impressed.
And I think there's something to be said, Rich did come out of the assessment center as the higher scorer, not by a landslide by any means. But that assessment center tests you in all the different hats that you're gonna be wearing, from management to, you know, fire scenes to employee relations to all.
What if scenarios?
Scenarios that happen day to day.
Nine hours.
And that carries a big weight in my mind. You see what, how they're gonna react. It's not on paper, it's not, you know, it's one-on-one, reenactment, role-playing, and you see the true person come out, because they purposely try to rattle your cage.
Right. It was quite an exercise, quite a panel of people in their questions and follow-ups. And like I said, it's one thing if you're doing, you know, a half an hour interview, but it's quite another thing when you've been with them the entire day. And then another group comes in and interviews them. There was also another interview panel before, you know, in between the assessment center and yourselves.
Right. Thoughts?
Well, I, sometimes it's better to go with the person you know. And if Russ knows an individual, worked with an individual.
I'm gonna leave that alone. But, yeah.
And he is familiar with mass laws and the area and the roads and all that things already, so. I, it's a tough one, because three quality people, absolute quality people, that I'd make a motion that we give Richard the nod.
The offer?
The offer. And.
We're gonna enter into negotiations.
And enter into negotiations.
Zero second.
I wanna make it interesting. I wanna nominate the other gentleman from Virginia as well. And put it out on the table, and we can have a discussion about it. I think those were their two strongest candidates by far of the two. And I think we should have that discussion and follow through. And also, you know, one of the things I'm looking at, and I don't wanna put the board in an uncomfortable position, so is looking down the road as to the bench and how this, how this sets up, right, as.
And it's going to.
I mean, that's. At least we gotta talk about it, and we gotta think about it, right? Like, we are looking at this.
Five or six years, you know.
Chief is cognizant of that.
So.
No, I understand.
And I, you know, I, obviously, we can't make a determination on that, and, you know, I don't, I don't know how to discuss it properly, but it's something to consider as far as the bench for the town. And like I said, from an interview, from the interview and from the data that we analyzed and looked at and the responses to our questions and in the assessment, I believe the, sorry, the other gentleman had scored higher, the gentleman from, that had worked with even Grandi, Richard. But at least I wanna put that motion out there for consideration, and then we can finalize that.
Okay. Soon I'll write a second. Both motions?
Well, we can just have a general discussion.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, that's fine. And I agree. I think that.
I'll hold off, you know, and we'll have a general discussion on both candidates and.
Well, I, because I just wanna be clear, that's the angle I'm looking at, and I don't know what's the right way to approach that question, right, without, you know, if that's something that we, that you're looking at as that from the process that you went through. I don't know how you look at that, but that's what, one of the things back in my mind. I think both of them would do, could do a very, very good job in this role.
Agreed.
Residency requirement?
So, yeah, well, it's a 15-mile.
Mileage. Yeah.
No, the only reason why I would favor Rich over the other gentleman, Doug, is I think that he has been working in communities similar in size to Southwick. He knows the area. Obviously, he's worked with our chief already. I mean, the other gentleman has a much bigger department. Would he fit in? He could, but there's a curve there that you're gonna be dealing with a smaller community and a smaller budget, and it's, you know.
I think the first one interviewed much better as far as where we're headed on the paramedic side. Definitely had more involved with that, and Rich even said that. He said, "Yeah, I'm in it, but, you know, I'm more of a fire guy." And he's both, absolutely both. Because I don't think, that was almost a trick question. Pick one. I don't, I don't think you really need to pick fire or EMS. You know, which area do you feel you are stronger in? Yeah, I guess he felt stronger in fire, only because, like he said, he started from day one in fire, and then he's been in EMS. But the other guy seemed to be really more into the EMS side, be it his position, where he's coming from. Does a million medical calls a year. So that did impress me, that, and that is the direction we're going. I get that. But that was the only thing I saw that was, you know, I kinda went, hmm, you know. I don't know if we had switched around how we interviewed, if it would've changed anything. But very strong, that first guy was very strong. And yes, bigger town, absolutely. And it is a different scenario. I guess somewhat nervous when someone works with someone in general, you know, yes, you know the goods, the bads, the uglies. God, we all do. And that's okay, too, because you already know where you're headed, one way or the other. And my understanding is, when you did work with him, it wasn't a situation where you were best friends anyways. He was an employee there. So, like, get that out there, too. It's not like, you know, we're buddies, because it's not. He's just another employee that worked at the same facility in a different manner, but underneath your umbrella. Yeah, so, which is fine. We've still been with some good guys over the years. We have. So.
Well, I, you know, my last thing I'll say is that I think when we hired Russ, I think he's come on, and he's really proven himself. I think he's taken the department to a new level. I think he's been very successful. And I'm gonna take his recommendation, because I think he knows where we're heading and what we want to achieve, so.
This is very true.
I feel comfortable with his recommendation.
Are we done discussing this? Okay. I will second your motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Best way to do it, I think. I like them all.
They're excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'm sure this was a good choice. I pray to God it's a good choice. And here we go.
Subject to the yada-yadas.
Oh, yada-yada.
Forget the yada.
Yeah.
Same process we did with the police lieutenant second. Yeah, I got a text.
Oh, wonderful.
Are you fun, are you tabled?
Yeah, that's fine. Alright, what else do we have? Oh, I should wait, put my glasses back on, Mr. Meehan. You can see what else you have.
He's gotta go crash a phone booth.
Yeah. Alright.
Let's see, well, we still have our goals. We can do that at another time.
All the goals, we're gonna save them for the next term.
Right, we get, let's see. ConCom coordinator, that stipend for the cell and the vehicle use.
Yeah, so we have the Con, we have the coordinator stipend for.
Yeah, and then you got three items under new business, which I think we already took.
Alright. So coordinator stipend for auto cellular use.
Right, that was submitted by Chairman Pratt.
Chairman Pratt. And what was the dollar amount they were looking for?
It was similar to what is done for the health inspector.
I know. I know. And is there anyone else that's gonna fall under having these stipends that are similar to the health inspector?
No, because I mean, I think Carol did that research. We either, most people, we either issue them a vehicle and issue them a phone, so.
Just weird that it took this long for this to come out. It just.
That's true.
Some people would say it rubs you the wrong way, but.
Or the timing of it. But, you know, they have their.
No, and I.
They have their separate fund source that could pay for it, so.
I know, but even that gets old after a while. Everyone's got a fund source, but in the end, it's still coming from somebody. And I get it. And I'm just being a jerk, so it's fine. I'm used to it. Thoughts, Russ? Should I sum it up?
Slippery slope, you know, that we're going down, and, you know, how we pull figures out of the air, like 75%, things like that. I just don't get it.
How many hours is that position?
You certainly could modify the number.
Yeah, I think we should modify the numbers. I'm gonna be, I mean, you know, this is a part-time position, right?
Right. That's like just asking, what were the hours?
Right, right. It's not full-time.
What's the hours for that position?
24.
24, so that's.
What's timing?
26.
26.
50% on the phone, and what was the other thing? I can't remember now. I remember the phone was 75% or something like that.
You still on business, do you mail packet?
I'll be right here on this. Thank you. Mr. Clark, so the cell phone bill is the average of $55. A 75% reimbursement would be $41.25 per month, or a quarterly payment of $123. Yeah, I'd go half on that.
I'll make it an informal motion.
And then the other one, Mr. Clark's mileage reimbursement would be compared to Mr. Fitzgerald's, as they do similar site visits and inspections at 450 per quarter, a total of $1,800 a year. How many years has Mr. Clark been in this position?
Why can't Mr. Clark use a town vehicle? I can understand Tommy's, he's gotta take equipment, doesn't wanna take equipment, but why can't Mr. Clark use a town vehicle?
The assessor uses one of them significantly. Almost every day, yeah. For fieldwork.
But we have three of them, right?
No.
Two?
Two.
And one of them.
And we don't do a mileage thing, like, they don't have to do report mileage?
They wouldn't do mileage in town.
No, I'm just, hey, private sector guy, you know, gotta ask the question.
I prefer that he uses a town vehicle.
Your thoughts, Mr. Mogul?
It would be preferable to use a town vehicle, but I would, in the interest of keeping it simple, anyone to call it $1,000 for the, for the year would make a lot of sense.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to that.
I agree with that. I think that's fair. And it's something to look at, and.
So now we gotta combine motion on the floor, 50% on the phone and $1,000.
Alright.
Is what I think.
Joe, write that on there.
Could I add to that motion?
From their fund source.
That this is a one-year trial and to be reviewed next year.
Sure. Yeah, and that's coming out of the revolving fund adoption, covers the, what's this, CapCom, right? CapCom? ConCom?
ConCom.
ConCom, ConCom.
You're on CapCom.
I'm on CapCom. Alright.
I'm on CapCom.
Great, babe.
Second.
Yeah. Is there a motion made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just fill that out.
Fill it out, yeah. Go ahead. Vice Chair, fill it out. They wanna be able to read it when we're done.
And.
Yep.
Also, the other two items you have is, well, three, you got the discussion on the Southwick Police Department temporary sergeant position.
We'll wait, table that for a while.
No, that's, he says temporary.
Oh, what do you mean temporary?
Well, with your, with the.
Well, right, with the realignment, right, so.
With the re, with the structure.
Sure.
Bobby goes up into the lieutenant position on a one-year probationary period.
Oh, correct.
So the sergeant has to be probationary.
So when the sergeant, the sergeant that would backfill him.
Right.
Just the same cycle that was done, was you made that decision in August of the year that Kevin had gone up to the lieutenant position. So you can still table if you want.
We'll table it, because the chief should bring that to us anyways, right?
Well, that's your.
That's how it's worked in the past.
That's your prerogative.
Has brought that up. We never.
That's, no, you interview people that.
No, 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 no. We'll interview, but we never poke the chief and said, "Hey, when you gonna get us that temporary sergeant in front of us," right?
You have it.
They brought, the chief brought it to us.
Then we have to post it?
Yeah.
That's what I have.
Yes, that's what I said.
You have to direct the chief to post.
You have to authorize us to post.
In the interest of timing, this is David's last, so.
We'll just wait. Table it for now.
Bring it up in two weeks.
Right.
And the chief can be, own the process, right?
Exactly. That's what I meant.
You're right, right.
I'm sorry.
It won't change what you're gonna do.
No, 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 but why?
Intended or evolved. It's just the process start to finish.
You got new guys starting Monday, so let's just wait till Monday.
I'm just putting it in the folder.
I appreciate that, boss man. It's in there. Alright, we did the FY '18 year-end transfer under Municipal Modernization Act. That's the.
Right, that's the chairman of the board's electors authorized to do those transfers.
With the finance committee, which we've already done.
Yep, pursuant to that law, and we'll cite the law.
We sure will. Authorized electricity bid renewal through LPVEC.
Right, Joe and I worked for Paul Schroeder and did the electricity bid renewal for the fall, so. And I had to sign that off last Friday. And it's with IGS, so the board needs to ratify the CAO signing the 36-month agreement with IGS, which was the lowest unit price electric bidder out of the.
What'd you get for a rate?
Point oh, I mean, don't forget, this is supply.
Yeah, of course.
So.
Get it under 10?
Oh, yeah.
I went three-figure, and it's not going down.
Yeah, Joe, that's why, when Joe and I looked at it.
Wait, does that mean it's gonna go down?
Huh?
You think it'll go down?
No.
Well, it depends if, how much under 10 you got.
How much under 10 did I get? What's the over/under on this?
Joe. Let's see. Point 09360.
I'm okay?
Yeah, you're okay.
Alright.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a three-year, right?
Yeah, I did, I just figured.
Yep, so you authorized the chair to sign it, which he did last Friday.
We support the chair on it.
Yeah, yeah. Don't go there yet. 200%. Right. Alright, so that's all I have under new business here. Gentlemen, do you have any new business?
I have old business.
Alright, old business first, please.
Can we continue to chase the Lake Management Committee?
Around the lake?
And the conservation to get that information to Suffield, so we can get our check from Suffield this year?
Are you getting phone calls?
Well, that check doesn't, our check doesn't affect with that process.
But we can get that process and MOU in place, but we owe them that data. They were the ones who reached out to us.
Right.
Shame on us for not having that data to them two weeks ago. And then.
Right, and follow-up to that, I did also ask Ken Albano where the draft MOA is.
Right, but he bills by the hour. These guys work for us. They should have that information by now.
Well, it's not more part-time, and we just got a cell phone turned back on, so.
Well, and that's covered by the social media policy now, by the way.
Alright, okay. Fair enough.
Half of it.
Half of it. Anything else under old business?
Uh, no, get to it when we get to goals and objectives next week, or next meeting.
Goals and objectives. I got plenty of goals and objectives. Sir, anything under old business?
Old business, I just, you know, got my new transfer station sticker.
Did you qualify for anything? Any discounts?
I got a mother-in-law.
Oh, under the same roof, right?
You better believe it.
Show me that 50.
She produces more trash than I do.
What's he talking about? He qualifies it on his own age, anyway.
Well, he's just not letting us know that right now.
Wow, anybody get that license plate?
Oh, my God.
What number did you get? I got like $390 or something, or $339.
I didn't get one yet.
Didn't even look at it.
Randy, who gets number one? Who gets, oh.
Randy.